We'll start with the karakia. Fakata katahao kite uru. Fakata katahao kititonga. Kia ma kina kina ki uta. Kia matuara tara kitaie. Ehi aki ana te atakura. Etio, i hoka, i hauhu, tihei maori ora. So in terms of housekeeping, we've got, as I said, an hour's public participation, roughly speaking. And we have a full slate. We will break at about three thirty. We've reconfigured the agenda, so we'll deal with the item, which I think we might be able to get through by that. We break time, which will be the convention centre parking item. And then we'll go to the other two items, because the the public participants are broadly split between the the following two items. Do I have any apologies? Officers, is everybody here? Jennifer, you got everybody on? Okay, well, I see no apologies. And if if somebody was apologizing, it's because they're not here. So, okay, announcements. Just briefly, the Prime Minister, many of you will have seen, the Prime Minister made some announcements this afternoon about what level two would look like, at least at a high level. And that was certainly very, very interesting. And, you know, she didn't say when we were going to level two, but obviously it's preparation for moving towards level two, whether that's at one step or she did in debate whether that's at a number of steps. We, as a council, have obviously been doing a lot of work to prepare ourselves as an organisation and to prepare to think about how the city operates under level two. And we will be making some initial announcements about some of those elements this afternoon. So I will certainly be highlighting those on the Facebook video that I will do on the council website later on, and we will be putting out a press release to that effect as well. Conflicts of interest. Are there any conflicts of interest? No? Okay, I'd like to move the confirmation of the minutes of the meeting, the council meeting of the 30th of April. I will move that. I see councillor Day next to me on my screen anyway, who's got a second there? Thank you. Is there any debate on that? I see none. If everybody could vote in the usual way.
We've got thirteen just for the council's rush. Apologies.
Okay, thank you all. Thanks very much. Okay. Now, in terms of public participation, who's my timekeeper for this one?
Time for you, Kiu Wha'atua?
Yes, thank you. Thanks very much. If you can let me know when there's thirty seconds, or I say a minute to go with each of them, that will be helpful.
One minute.
I will let people know. Thank you. Okay. I'll try and keep a time as well. So just in order, we have Jill Ford, Ella Borey, Alicia Hall, representing millions of mothers, Marco Garlick and Erin Cox, representing Generation Zero. Patrick Morgan for Cycle Wellington, Doctors Marion Leighton and Amanda Tristram from, I haven't written down the title, sorry, Marion and Amanda. Mike Meller and Ellen Blake from Living Streets, Jonathan Copard, Ron Behnink, Steve Bealby, Mary Anderson from Enterprise Miramar, and then Kevin Ishwood and Felicity Wong for Oriental Bay. So that is a very full slate. And so if we can be quick and efficient getting through, it gives everybody else a fair crack at the win. So Jill, you're first up. Welcome. It's lovely to have you all here on it. But just before we do start, can I just give you one piece of information which may not be with all of you? Is that several of you are going to be talking about the Innovating Streets programme. And I think there is some feeling that there might be a much larger amount of money available than actually is the case. We've been informed quite clearly at seven million dollars, not a hundred million dollars, although we will see what NZTA ultimately ends up doing with it. But I just thought it was worth your understanding that. Jill, welcome. Lovely to see you.
Right, Kiu Rukato. In response to COVID-19, the Innovating Streets has one of its goals is to keep people safe. Next. Next slide, please. As our leaders, we expect you to all show vision and seize opportunities. Innovating Streets is an opportunity to enable our cities to quickly trial projects and see how they work. Unfortunately, the current proposal seems somewhat like business as usual with lengthy consultation. Were we to go to level two next week, demand on public transport will be high, but capacity will be at best fifty percent. We therefore need to act quickly so people can get to work, children get to school, utilizing active transport rather than cars. Next. Over the last four to six weeks, we've seen a big increase in people cycling, walking and running. Part of that has because the streets have been really, really safe. It's also lowered carbon and nitrogen emissions. Our city has the opportunity to build on this, so we have a healthier future for everyone and our environment. Unfortunately, there appears to be in this proposal a twenty times greater weighting on the risk of removing car parking than on people's safety. Next. Yet, if we're to maintain people's new healthy habits, we have to continue to keep our seats safe. Or we're going to go back to major congestion and habits will be lost. Whilst traffic resolutions may be necessary in normal times, this is the new normal. Next. We're still in an emergency and we can put in traffic resolutions or traffic measures that don't require traffic resolutions if we're using temporary structures like cones. This was managed last week outside McDonald's, simply to allow a whole load of people to eat at McDonald's. There are quick, simple, temporary measures that can be put in place in just a few days. Next. We must, we must not forget the suburbs. It's not just the CBD, because people need to get from where they live to where they work and children need to get to school. So in addition to some of the measures, perhaps a whole heap of thirty K per hour zones would be really good. Next. What I'm going to now propose is just a few simple measures that could be taken. So Lampton Key, Golden Mile, et cetera. You could simply take out all the private vehicles, put in some signs and planters. I've got some examples here. Victoria and Featherson Street, how about just using cones, paint and tape to start with? Newtown to the waterfront is a really important cycling and walking mode of transport. Let's see thirty kilometres per zone. Let's eliminate the parking at the bottom of Mean Street so we can safely get to the green box and children and ambulances can get around. We've got bus and bike lanes already in place, making twenty-four seven. Or better still, take out the parking in the middle and convert it to a cycle lane with some cones taking signs. Next. Brooklyn Hill, it's proposed. That's fantastic. Let's put in some cones and tape before we get the bollards put in. Thorne and Key and Oriental Bay both have a whole heap of angle parking that could easily be converted to parallel parking, leaving space for some pop-up bike lanes. Again, signs, paint, planters and tape would probably do the job. Glenmore and Corory Road, they already have hard shoulders. Most people have off-street parking. There is no reason why we couldn't put in some signs and bike sensors.
One minute, Jill.
Thanks. Taranaki Street to the waterfront. This has very little parking. It can easily take that parking out and put in temporary bike lanes at the nasty intersection. Allow the cyclist just to pop onto the pavement to get across the intersection. Next. This will enable us to have a vibrant, healthy city, as shown from various countries I've been to, that is sustainable environmentally, socially and economically for everyone. And most importantly, cheap and safe to get around. Next. So please seize the moment, because we can have a city that is better and prospers after this pandemic.
Jill, thank you very much. And you almost bang on time, so well done.
I practised.
How did you do? You did well. Okay, thank you very much. We really appreciate it. And can I say to all the public participants too, once you've finished, if you can, do feel free to hop off and hop onto the YouTube. Okay? Thank you. Ellen, Ella, sorry.
Kia ora, how's it going?
Kia ora, Ella.
Awesome, I'm ready to go if that works for you.
Go for your life.
Perfect. Kia ora, Koto. Thank you so much for having me. Kua Ella Boreyaho. I've never presented to council before and I'm only doing it because I really care about this. So thank you very much for having me. I thought I'd give a little bit of introduction about me and how I get around the city. So I've lived in Newtown and in Wellington for three years. I get around the city in lots of ways. I walk, I use cars, I use buses and I bike. I have only started biking in Wellington this year, since the start of the year. I put myself in the keen but concerned category. So I love biking. It has been such a joy in lockdown to have an outlet to get around and to feel some mental and physical wellbeing. I'd love feeling safe, but I just can't see myself feeling safe enough to commute into work when I go into work in the city. I, I would love to feel safe, but with the lack of protected cycle space from cars and, cars and buses and pedestrians, I just don't feel that. Yeah, so I guess I wanted to talk about the Innovating Streets application. I think first off, I'd love to support Cycle Wellington's essential services route. I think that sums up basically what I think should be done. I'd really like to support the recommended options. I think they're a great start, but personally, they don't actually make it safer for me at all to get into, into the city. And I don't really prioritise connectivity or maybe dedicated space for cyclists and for pedestrians. I would love to encourage some of the not recommended projects to go ahead. I think they will really make a big difference. For me personally, Rinto Street, Adelaide Road, Canton Cambridge Terrace are the real big ones that would make me feel like I would be able to bike into, into the city. I know that some of these are entraining other work streams, but if there's any way to get them done earlier, that would be fantastic. I just have a short presentation, so I'll just conclude now. I really just wanted to say that this is an issue that people really care about and it's probably my number one thing I care about from council. I would love to encourage you to be bold and to take it as an opportunity to make Wellington better, like Jill said, and to push the bike out a little bit further, you know? Take a bit of a risk. I would love to not feel brave to hop on my bike and I'd love for active transport to be a real option for people. And I also wanted to thank you for reducing speeds on the South Coast that has really made a difference and it was much appreciated. So that's all I had to say, but yeah, I thought I'd keep it short.
Ella, thank you. And you've also left a couple of minutes for questions, if anybody has any. Now, I've got councillor Rush, is that a hand up for this? Now, was that? No, that was, so that was your, that was obviously for Jill. That's okay.
It was for Jill, yeah.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. Thank you. Has anybody got any questions for Ella? I see lots of thumbs up, but, oh, councillor Paul.
Kia ora, Ella, I'll ask a question. Thank you for your participation and I love your courtidore. I am in the group of new cyclists, so totally totalable. I just wanted to ask your perspective as a young person living in Wellington. What's your thoughts on e-scooters and how they interact with cyclists? Do you have any thoughts around that?
Yeah, thanks councillor Paul. I think the main problem with e-scooters is that there's just not enough space for pedestrians and for cyclists and for people on e-scooters. I think it's not a problem on like anyone in any form of transport. There are people who behave badly, that is across everything, right? It's just that there isn't, like pedestrian spaces aren't prioritised. I think, I think it would be solved if you had a protected cycle lane and you had wider footpaths. I think that problem would be, would kind of go away.
Thank you. Ella, Ella, thank you very much. We really appreciate it and hopefully we'll be able to make some, some progress across some of those work streams that you mentioned.
Kia ora, thank you very much.
All of them. Thank you. Alicia. Alicia, I see you there. Welcome. Lovely to have you here.
Thank you. Kia ora, Koto. Thanks for the time to speak today. As usual, we'll be expressing a broad overview. And I'll be quick, I'll try and be quick. My family has entered a new phase. My youngest Tara, she turned five during level four lockdown and she's getting her first proper bike. And we've heard from so many of our families, our friends, millions of mothers members, that have loved the freedom and confidence to cycle with their children on our streets during lockdown. The mental and physical health benefits have been wonderful and many, including myself, want to continue this freedom but lack confidence due to the lack of or poor infrastructure. Which brings me to the first, the accessible streets package. We broadly support council submission. We do have some concerns that there's no incentive to address the elephant in the room, like a proper, protected and connected cycleway infrastructure throughout New Zealand. But it's great to note that your officers have raised this in a few points, I think, in particular four G twelve and point thirty regarding the need for a protected network. We fully support young children and vulnerable people on the footpaths regardless of mode. In general though, we're uneasy with cycles and e-scooters on the footpaths, particularly busy ones, because there simply is not enough space. My children don't feel safe. We've had several near misses and they're really twitchy when on shared paths. And we now have a new learner cyclist in our family, so we're not sure how practical a family of five on bikes is on a footpath to support her. But so we'd like to see the council push for serious advancement of proper cycleway infrastructure sooner. Because our kids are growing up in an active, I'll start again, our kids are growing up in an active mode culture and like us, they need that infrastructure and to support this pretty quick. Which leads me to Innovating Streets, which is supporting physical distancing as we enter lower levels. Firstly, I just want to note, it says there's no treaty implications. So I'm assuming this means Manu Fenua have been consulted and there's no risk to cultural practices. It would be really good to have that made more clear. And like previous speakers, we think this is an exciting opportunity to change patterns of behaviour that we're locked into and don't want. We've entered a new world in which we don't want the city to be left behind in. Innovating Streets is the key to unlocking our city at the moment, I think. Because perfection is the enemy of the good. And so again, we have this exciting opportunity to get it roughly right, to experiment and to have people engaged and involved. This is real experiential consultation. Getting the feel for how it works, tweak it and move it forward, you know? It'll also allow, I think, the acceleration of let's get Wellington moving. And I think it's really important to consult broadly, because an accessible city must be inclusive, equitable and accessible. Cars don't support retail and hospitality, we do, people do. There is strong evidence to, to support increased retail revenue. Consistent data shows benefits of replacing parking space with cycleways. When a cycleway was put in Ninth Avenue in New York, it experienced a whopping forty-nine percent increase in retail revenue post-construction. So I don't believe this evidence is new to council. So we find the weighting on the risk of losing car parks when evidence concludes otherwise quite odd. So I'm happy to provide further evidence via email, reporting the benefits for cities who put in good infrastructure for active modes. So Innovating Streets will be.
One minute left, thanks Alicia.
Got a little bit left. Innovating Streets will bring people through the evolution of the city. So give it a go, be ambitious, attract people back to the central city through participatory experiments while boosting the retail and hospitality sectors. Because people not only want, but they need choice. So aim for roughly right, learn from feedback and unlock our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. We've got about thirty seconds left, so I'm going to take the opportunity of a quick question if I can. And that's just to ask you, it's actually not so much on the Innovating Streets one, but you mentioned cycling as a family of five on the footpath. Just wanted, the other paper which we're considering today is the one around accessible streets. And I just wondered if you had any comment about how you would see that best working in your family situation? If you've got, you know, your five-year-old being accompanied, how many people would accompany them, whatever? How would that work best in terms of yourselves and other, other people?
That's the catch twenty-two, isn't it? And that's what I meant by the elephant in the room. It's, it just seems to me that we're shunting cyclists in between roads and footpaths, you know? Like we're just, they're not even in between there, we're just shunting them. We're not creating a space that's connected and safe and supports people being able to go on the roads.
I take your point. Alicia, thank you. We really appreciate you coming, coming along. And again, if you want to hop onto the, the YouTube to watch the meeting, we'd be delighted to have you on there.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Marco and Erin. See you there, Marco. Welcome. Lovely to have you here.
Thanks, me Andy Foster. Laura will be presenting first, Erin.
Oh, okay, Laura, welcome as well.
Thank you. I've got a PowerPoint. Sweet. Great, Kia ora, Koto. My name's Laura. I'm here with Marco and we're speaking on behalf of Generation Zero and National Advocacy Group for Action on Climate Change. Next slide. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak today. I'll be speaking to the council submission on the central government's accessible streets package and Marco will be giving feedback on Innovating Streets. I think that that might be the wrong slide. Yeah, so just back a few slides. So the next one. Okay. So we don't have much time, we'll just get straight into it. So Generation Zero is still formulating our own submission on accessible streets in respect to the technical details. However, I'd just like to share the general principles that we've developed, which we urge the council to adopt in your submission as well. We're extremely concerned that this package would allow bikes and continue to allow e-scooters to ride on footpaths in New Zealand, when this is no substitute for segregated biking infrastructure such as bike lanes. As it stands, this proposal will make streets significantly less safe for those disabled people who use the footpaths and have impairments such as mobility, visual and hearing impairments, making it more difficult to get out of the way of bikes and scooters. This is a serious issue of safety for disabled people. Of course, there are many disabled people who, who use bikes and scooters who are currently unsafe when they ride on the roads. However, we reiterate that investing in bike lanes is a much safer option for everyone involved. Forcing pedestrians, bikes and e-scooters to fight for space in the footpath highlights the decades of under-investments in cycle paths. We want to acknowledge that cyclists who currently have to ride on roads alongside cars face very real danger. However, cyclists who are terrified to ride on roads should be able to empathise with those disabled people who are currently terrified of the prospect of bikes and continued use of scooters on footpaths. The answer can't be to trade one group's safety for another and we can't leave anyone behind when designing our streets to be more just and equitable. It's unacceptable for the government to skirt around more systemic issues of poor street space allocation by forcing cyclists and pedestrians to vie for the same space. It's just not true that we have to pick between putting cyclists at risk, at risk and putting pedestrians at risk. The government has the power to invest in cycle lanes and to invest more widely in a just transport system where all people feel safe and can access low-carbon transport options. And we shouldn't settle for this package, which puts the lives of disabled people on the line. Above all, Generation Zero does not wish to be seen as an expert on this issue when the real experts are disabled people. Our stance on this package has been formulated by listening to the responses and submissions of disability justice groups and would be happy to share those resources. We urge the council to engage meaningfully with groups that represent disabled people, to reach out to them proactively, to compensate them for their time and to really listen to them when making submissions that impact on them. Next slide. In this particular case, we urge the council to highlight the disability, the disabled community's concerns in your submission to accessible streets and to encourage long-term investment in infrastructure that keeps everyone safe rather than forcing groups to compete for safety. And Marco, you up?
Thanks Laura. Next slide, please. I'm going to speak to the Innovating Streets Fund. I think that lots of people are going to speak to this, so I will just highlight just a few things. First of all, big thanks to the council for listening to us in our previous presentation and listening to lots of people and pulling through with these measures. I understand it's a busy and stressful time and so it's real great that, you know, we could get these measures proposed. I think people are really anxious that they'll be going back to work and they won't be able to adequately physically distance under level two. So this goes a long way to allowing people to commute, exercise, go to the shops and do all that sort of stuff. So to take a closer look at the emergency distancing proposal, we've got some points up there. We think the proposals are good. Let's build them now. We are concerned over the weightings given to preserving car parks. I think a lot of other people are going to be talking about this. I think that.
About it, you've got a minute, Marco.
The take that I think that council needs to take away is that this risk needs to be looked at holistically, more walking and cycling space. It is a really good thing for business in this time. I think if people are concerned about losing parking revenue, I think that's just not true. I think if people are able to go to the shops safely and get around safely, then that will be good for everyone. I think also the projects that have been rejected in table two, build them as well and support other people's proposals that I'm going to speak as well. I think really the Golden Mile is a real missing piece in here, given that's the busiest footpath in the country. Next slide. There's also the technical.
If I can get you to wrap up now, Marco, too, please.
Okay, yeah. Just, just to talk about the textual evidence and trials, great proposals in table three, but for the next round of funding, we urge you to go bigger. There's some ideas there on the slide.
Thank you. Laura and Marco, thank you very much. Really appreciate you coming along. And again, if you want to hop onto the YouTube and watch the meeting, we'd be delighted to have you here.
Great, thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Patrick, Patrick Morgan representing Cycle Wellington. Patrick, lovely to see you there.
Good. Thank you, Andy, and good afternoon councillors. I'm going to talk for about two minutes, making some brief points, then I'd like to hear from you. First, thank you for the work your officers have done in producing Innovating Streets. You know, we appreciate their delivering Let's Get Wellington Moving and the cycling programme. And during a lockdown, having to do additional work is, is pretty heroic. Thank you. Second, we support the proposed Innovating Streets package. And like other presenters today, we urge you to go further to include what we call the essential workers route to connect the hut road through the city to the hospital. We know the government wants to pick up ninety percent of the costs. This aligns with the council's growth plan to Atakura first to zero and the draft parking policy, and there is strong public support. Just read out a message from my friend David Tripp. He's a doctor at Wellington Hospital who uses this route every day. From David, I urge Wellington City Council to provide a safe and direct route to and from the hospital and through the city. As traffic levels increase, I face more risk every day on my commute. Building a protected cycling route will improve the health of your health workforce who are ready and waiting for this initiative. It will decrease emissions and get cars off congested roads, something we need right now. So I think I'm going to leave it there because I really want to hear from you, from, from our councillors.
Thank you, Patrick. That's nice, nice and short and sweet. Are there any questions of Patrick? Councillor Neil and then councillor Free and councillor Day. We'll see how we go. Got you councillor Rush too. We get time. Councillor Neil.
Sorry, cut here.
Can't hear you. Very quiet. Okay, councillor, deputy mayor Free.
Hi Patrick. Look, I just wanted to ask your opinion about Riddaford Street down to the Basin Reserve, or it might be, it's actually Adelaide Road, most of it. What would you think about the safety of a central lane for bikes going in two, two directions in the middle of that road as a cyclist? It's not, I have to tell you, it's not our star's preferred option, though. But I'm interested in your feedback.
Yeah, it's not best practice. Thank you, Sarah.
Okay, thank you. It's clear councillor Day.
Okay, Patrick, thanks for coming to talk to us today. I bike part of that route, but as someone who doesn't do the whole thing, where are the, where are the parts that you consider are the bits that we could address that would really make that route so much safer and a better experience for cyclists?
Sure, I mean, the simple answer is, the simple answer is Jill, all of it. You know Thornham Key has been a highlight for us for years and years. The space there, it's a really, it's a missing link in the network between the good facility that you've put in on Hut Road and the railway station in the central city. We also think strongly that people on the waterfront need their physical space. We'll see scooters, people walking, running there. The best way to reduce risk there is to do what was recommended years ago, take a little bit of space off the six lanes on the keys and make it available for people on bikes. I think that one's a no-brainer.
Thanks, Patrick. Councillor Rush.
Yeah, thanks, Patrick. So the innovative streets package is, in the COVID context, is designed for these pop-ups to add to safety, to stop spread of COVID-19. How, I mean, I like the sound of your project, but I'm just trying to understand, how does that stop the spread of COVID-19 as people get into city?
Sure. So Innovating Streets is not just about cycling, it's also a Sure. So innovating streets is not just about cycling, it's also about wider footpaths and creating more space for the public at this time. Uh, we know that the government is telling people one to two metres spacing. Um, our footpaths don't don't operate that way at the moment, and I'd point to the waterfront as an example. Simply, people on foot need more space to protect them at this time. Also, we'll see that there'll be probably less demand for public transport at this time and less capacity. This is an opportunity for the council to indicate to people we will support your choice if you want to get around by foot or by bicycle. Uh, this is the time we're gonna put people first and prioritise that over um over car parking at this time. Thanks for your question, Sean.
Thanks, Patrick. Councillor Neil, do you want to have another crack? Still pretty quiet, but give it a go.
Let's go.
Yeah.
That's better.
Um, you've got a pitch. How would you see the intersection on footpaths between micro mobility users um cyclists and and here for disabled people?
Sure, great question. We've just heard from Laura from Gen Zero. We take a different view. We actually um, we agree on supporting people with disabilities and that footpaths are primarily for people on foot and mobility devices. We disagree on the best way to achieve that. Uh, we think that a simple ban on footpath cycling is unlikely to be effective. Instead, there's more, there's better ways to reduce risk. Um, by making footpath cycling legal for children and their guardians, we permit NZTA cycling instructors to instruct on safe and courteous use. We also agree with Gen Zero strongly that uh building protected cycleways will also do that. But we're realistic. It's taken us twenty or more years to get this far. That's not going to happen overnight. Thank you for your question, Terry. We also note that some people with disabilities uh do rely on bicycles to get around and that it's far from a united voice um in in the disability community. Thanks.
Thank you, Patrick. Really appreciate that. And again, if you want to hop on and uh and watch the uh, uh, watch the meeting through YouTube.
Thank you, councillors. Thank you, Andy.
Thanks for that, Patrick. Uh, Marion and Amanda. I can see them there. Kyo, welcome.
Hello, um, I'm Dr Marion Leighton. I'm one of the general physicians, specialist physicians at Wellington Hospital, and I'm here with Amanda Tristram. I'm one of the cancer surgeons here at Wellington Hospital. And so, um, we thought we would just do a very brief bit. We're very keen to answer your questions. Uh, we thought we wouldn't um retell you all of the health statistics about the benefits of active transport, uh but give you a couple of maybe slightly different perspectives. So one of the commonest cancers I operate on is associated with obesity. And I spend a lot of my time talking to people about how they can build more exercise into their lives. We've heard that that needs to be in a sustainable fashion, so going for an extra walk or an extra bike ride at the weekend is lovely, but that's not enough. Do people need to be able to safely get out of their cars and walk or cycle every day on the uh as their main transport to and from work? And the biggest problem I find is people who don't live within walking distance of their work are too scared to cycle. They just don't think it's safe. Um, I'm sure some of that's a perception. And even if these very short-term um pop-up lanes don't solve all the problem, I think it does give people a hugely powerful motivator. Look, we're trying to make this safer. And I think that would be an enormous step in the right direction. We have been really, really encouraged to see that the council were able to close lanes and take away on-street parking in order to facilitate queues at fast food restaurants. And so we know that you can do this in order to facilitate the health of the people of Wellington as well and and keep people active. This is a really precious moment where the people of Wellington are actually thinking about their health for once, and they want to keep healthy and they want to keep their distance from other people in order to not spread diseases, but they also want to support their local businesses. So they need to be able to go into town, keep one to two metres apart from each other and shop in local businesses. And you need to be supporting them in doing that and seizing the day. And you could be significantly more ambitious about the scope of the um plans that you've put forward so far. And we really need you to show leadership in this because we're in the background in the hospital telling everyone to do these things, and they're being thwarted every step of the way by not being able to do it in town. You've seen internationally really good leadership in the last six weeks. There are people who get a good team, you listen to your experts, you're bold and proactive, and you don't let loud opinions shout you down because they want to keep the status quo. This is the time for change, and people, people are complaining about lack of physical distancing. It was the biggest complaint to the police, biggest complaint in articles about Air New Zealand in the last two days. They want you to provide space for them, and you need to get out there and do that. Closing lanes, making streets one-way, pop-up bike lanes, whatever you can do across the whole city and connecting suburbs and connecting through the city, so people can go the whole way in a safe um manner. And um we would love to answer your questions.
Thank, thank you very much. Um, are there any questions? I think we've got a little bit of time left. Right. Any questions, anyone? Councillor Free.
Kyo to Marion and Amanda. Thank you so much for coming in today, and I respect you've taken time out of your schedule. How many, um, can you tell us how many um people cycle to work to the DHB itself? Do you have any idea on that?
I'm not sure about the statistics of cycling to the DHB. I know we are um perpetually a problem with parking spaces, so more people do want to actively commute to um to work, and we're certainly part of the demographic, the same as the rest of Wellington, so it's probably about eleven to fifteen percent of people. And we are working and actively talking about more people, particularly those who work nine to five, which is most of the hospital coming um on foot or by bicycle or by public transport. And um and that that means getting from the city centre or from other suburbs to here is really important, and we do have the space to allow them to do it. I can also tell you that many more of the staff own bicycles than cycle to work. So it would be a very easy change if they just felt safe.
Yeah, great. Thank you so much for all of your mahi. Thank you, Marion.
Thank you. Uh councillor Rush, you had a quick question?
Always quick. Yeah, thanks very much for uh your your discussion today. Look, I I'm really worried about their um, what happens to the people when they get into the city. So we know statistics I've got show that seventy-five percent will will drive. Uh, there's uh a number that take public transport, but they all will get into the city and cyclists as well, of course. What can we do as a council to make our streets safer once people are in the city? So for their walk from the train station to the terrace or their office in Lanting Key, what can we do as a council to make that safe?
I think that is where parking comes into the fore. I think we need to temporarily remove most of the central city on-street parking, and that needs to be space for pedestrians. We probably, in terms of supporting our local cafes and small businesses, need room for them to spill out onto the pavement. And we need um to give room then for the cyclists in a lane on the road and possibly more for pedestrians as well. So making more roads one-way. Car drivers don't care about going the long way around. They're warm and comfy inside their cars. They already go all over the place to the long way around. Whereas pedestrians, when it's wet and cold, they really care about being able to get places quickly. We also probably need to change if possible, but this might be more tricky, some of the timings on the pedestrian crossings, so people can cross streets more easily and possibly so that they always allow pedestrians to cross rather than having to press the button. And and that's the sort of thing people are looking for us to do. And I'm afraid it's where the parked car probably does need to be sacrificed in at least the short term. There's plenty of other parking, and there's plenty of small places around the city on corners and in alcoves where we can prioritise disabled parking so that they can still come in and they can still park, and also loading zones at certain times of day because that obviously is crucial for keeping the city um running. But there's lots of um other places people can park, all the multi-story car parks and the like that out of towners can park in.
Thank you, Marion. Thank you, Amanda. We really appreciate it, and thank you very much for all the, all the work that you do uh every day, to keep us healthy and safe. And again, if you want to jump on and and watch, uh, that's great. If you want to get back to work, um, your, your work is very valuable, so. We'd appreciate that. Thank you. Um, Mike, Mella and Ellen Blake, representing Living Streets.
Here I am, Mayor and councillors. Thank you for this opportunity. Um, I'd like to start off by congratulating our fellow public participants. I think the quality has been amazing. And in particular, the the doctors and Generation Zero have um really cut to the quick. Um, I'd like to talk about uh all three substantive items on the agenda, so I'll get going. On the accessible street submission, um, I think that's pretty good. You think you've done a really, a pretty good job of presenting um what how this place should be. Um, a essential principle that we think should be in there, that footpaths are essential places for pedestrians of all kinds, which includes wheelchairs. And that that must not be put at risk by their being used as desirable places by others. As the other people have a choice, pedestrians don't. Um, we were also concerned about um uh speed limits on on footpaths. NZTA and your submission describes fifteen kilometres an hour as slow. When you're walking, it is not slow. It's three times a brisk walking speed. We should be uh, like a limit, if there needs to be a limit, we should be having a limit that respects the uh the normal speed that people use, just like road speed limits are set by um the speed that people actually achieve. Um, also, particularly on Oriental Parade, where um a shared path is proposed to have a thirty kilometre speed limit. We really want people hanging on the shared path there at thirty k's. Um, you make some good points about the intersection priority, and our view is that all straight-through movements that include pedestrians should have priority over turning movements without any special road markings, simple, clear, straightforward. And you also make the point that rules should be national, um not local, that exceptions should be a rarity, and we agree with that. Need to be simple enough. Moving on to the convention centre traffic resolution, thank you very much for the detailed response to our submission. Um, I'd like to make one point on that, is that um we suggested having a raised footpath uh on both the crossings with Cable and Wakefield. And we told that we can't do that because they're fifty-k street. Um, just like to point out in your um accessible street submission, you make the point in several places that every city street in New Zealand should have a thirty-k speed limit. So that applies to Cable and Wakefield streets, so please put the raised platforms in there consistent with the speed limit that you are recommending. Um, lastly, looking at the um innovative streets, uh once again, congratulations on a, on a really good selection of projects. Um, but the, the, the weighting of the process is, shall we say, questionable. Um, I've uh sent you a document, um, well, on the about the fourth page, there's a a table of the of the waitings that um I've rearranged in order of um science, size of weight, and also indicated which ones are priority and which ones are non-priority. The biggest priority you've given of all the paper gives is the on-street car parking, which is the lowest uh part of car parking um in the parking policy. And you've given that a fifty percent weighting. Um, that all the objectives that you have a slight priority, put them all together, and you've given them twenty-five percent. And you've given the facilitation of physical distancing zero. It is not mentioned in the weighting, and that's the whole point of the exercise. So um there's some real concerns there. The um, but the um, as has been said, um with one of the key issues in the city is the width of footpaths. They're already too narrow. You need three metres to have a two-metre separation. You need two metres to have a one-metre separation. Many footpaths are not that big, and that's just for two groups of people. If you have bigger groups of people, um, you've got real problems. We've got real problems. And there's a lot of footpath cluster which need, which should be looked at, sandwich board.
One minute, Mike.
Um, and that's it.
That's quick. Well done. Uh, Ellen didn't want to add anything? I would take questions. Okay, councillor Pannett, and then councillor Rush.
Thanks, Mike, um, for your submission. Um, what's your response to the argument that um we don't have enough cycleways, so um cyclists need to be kept safe, obviously, so need to go on the footpaths? And it's gonna take us some time to get there?
Um, I don't, I don't think cyclists need to go on the footpath. I may want to go on the footpath, but we are all in favour of cycle space. Um, cycle space is essential. Uh, it's essential for, to encourage active modes, it's essential for road safety. Um, but please, not at the expense of pedestrians.
Thank you. Councillor, uh councillor Rush, very quick.
Uh, thanks, Mike. Hey, Mike, do you have any sort of insight into how many people you think will be coming back to the Central Business District for work under level two, for example?
Well, I've heard estimates that about fifty percent of people will be back. Um, a large number of them will be, will be walking and and biking. And walking is is currently difficult, even with the limited numbers of people around because of the width of the footpath, except in places where the Golden Mile does have wider footpaths, but has very few people. When people start using that again, and the people will be walking to it from the railway station, even if public transport is at low capacity, they will still be there, and there will still be problems with the people we're forced to walk on the road because there isn't enough footpath space.
Mike, thanks. Mike and Ellen, thank you. We really appreciate you coming along. Always good to see you. And again, if you wish to uh hop onto uh the YouTube, we'd uh, we, you know, we welcome that. Stay safe. Thank you. Uh, Jonathan Kopar. Welcome.
Hello.
Hello, Jonathan.
Hi, uh, my name's Jonathan, as you said, um, and I'd like to speak to you guys on behalf of your innovating streets application and your accessible street submission. I'd like to start by thanking officers for their hard work in preparing these documents, and especially with the innovating streets for taking community submissions into account. Um, the accessible street submission as it stands is is really good. I have a few issues with it, which I will talk to in a minute. Um, it would be good to see changes to council processes and resourcing to enable council staff to respond more dynamically to events like this COVID nineteen pandemic. Um, I know that Auckland, for example, has done significantly better, and I know there's a lot of reasons why that is the case. Um, but it would be great if council could look um at seeing if we could be better at this in the future. So I work uh typically as a cycling instructor, teaching children um aged around ten to eleven in schools all over the Wellington region. In a typical year, we deliver cycle skills training to over five thousand schoolchildren and hundreds of adults who are new to riding bikes. A significant part of the role is performing risk assessments on Wellington streets to identify appropriate locations for training, looking at traffic levels and road design. The most difficult locations to run training in are in schools in northern and western wards where no cycling infrastructure exists. The roads are hillier in these suburbs and traffic's generally faster and less safe. The kids are keen to ride. They'll ride up hills even about any gears on their bike, and they love it. I've run training in the pouring rain, where the kids have insisted, no, we want to go back out. We don't care that it's raining, we want to ride our bikes. The only issue is that with a number of vehicles on the roads and lack of safe dedicated infrastructure, it's pretty scary for them to do so. If you've cycled on Wellington roads, imagine now being half the size and imagine how that might feel. The innovating streets application needs to be far more comprehensive and includes significant provisions for cycling in the Takabu and Farani wards. The routes need to be connected so people can get around to where they need to go. And we should see a trial of the car-free Golden Mile. Lots of people are calling for this. It's time for councillors to step up into it. In terms of the accessible street submission, it needs to support provisions for cyclists to ride on footpaths when they decide that this is the safest thing for them to do. Your submission currently incorrectly states that children's bikes are currently allowed on the footpath. This bike behind me is a child's bike and driven by someone aged five. It's currently illegal to ride this bike on the footpath under New Zealand law. Children are shocked when I tell them what the law says. I can't teach children how to safely operate bicycles on footpaths because I can only teach what the law says. That means I don't teach any safety around how to operate a bicycle around driveways or how to respect and care for other users on the footpath. It's very easy to be distracted by all the GoPros living around them powered e-scooters from the typical person who chooses to cycle on the footpath. From my experience spending many hours a day on streets all over Wellington, the people who decide to cycle on the footpath currently, despite it being illegal, are children and their families, elderly cyclists, people riding a bike for the first time, low-income people and refugees, and many people in the homeless community. Cyclists like myself never want to ride on the footpath. I have to ride slowly. I have to give way to pedestrians. Typically, it's rougher than on the road. But unfortunately, for the lack of safe infrastructure and according to goals for cycling stated in the annual plan, the situation is not likely to change within the next decade. Children and other people on bikes shouldn't be the ones to pay the price for the council's lack of investment in the interim. And Wellington City Council should make sure it's supporting vulnerable groups to get around the city. That's all. If you have any questions.
Thank you, Jonathan. Uh, we've got time for a couple of questions. Has anybody got any questions? Councillor Sparrow. Councillor Sparrow.
Yes, thanks very much for that, Jonathan. You mentioned the northern and western suburbs. Do you think it's more reasonable to concentrate at this stage on the central city and the eastern and southern suburbs, which are... There's a reasonable amount of flat areas, to concentrate on those areas first, and then look at the north and west? Or should there be more of a balance at this stage of the game?
I think it's a mistake to just limit cycle infrastructure to one area of the city. My experience teaching all over the city is that kids everywhere are keen to ride bikes. And obviously, I know a lot of your concerns at the moment are on workers and people getting to work, which is obviously a focus on the central city makes sense. But the piss-up that I see is out in the suburbs, and I'd like to see children being allowed to ride safely as well.
Jonathan, thank you. I don't see any other questions, really appreciate it, and thank you for the great work that you do in teaching people to ride.
Thank you.
Again, and again, if you want to hop on the YouTube, we welcome you there. Ron, Ron Behan, good to see you there, Ron, nice to see you.
Yeah.
Hope all as well.
Online as well, yeah, all very well. Thank you, Kiora, everybody, I'll go straight into it. So I want to talk about, I want to talk about the initiative to get a shared path between Shelly Bay and Scorching Bay. Just to set some context, I'm a member of the Great Harbour Way Trust, which advocates for a continuous route around the harbour that people young and old can safely enjoy, be it walking, cycling, or using a mobility scooter, for example. I'm also a committee member of Cycle Wellington. And in my previous role as chair, I helped to organise the so-called Cyclochia event for over three years. That was an open streets type of event that closed the Merama Peninsula to all vehicles for a whole day, and opened it for people on footbikes and scooters to enjoy. And each day of that event, we had an excess of 2,000, 3,000 people taking advantage of this. So that showed the enormous demand for people to be able to safely enjoy this unique, wild and iconic part of our Wellington Harbour coastline. The COVID level four lockdown also showed how people will immediately grasp the opportunity to walk and cycle when our streets are no longer dominated by vehicles. Therefore, we need to absolutely support and welcome these innovating streets initiatives, including this proposal to close the seaside lane between Shelly Bay and Scorching Bay to allocate it for walking and cycling. I appreciate it's a temporary closure, but let's also see it as a fantastic opportunity to trial this for a permanent solution. For this temporary closure, I do urge the council to widely advertise it, so that as many people as possible will take advantage of it. Possibly a day-long Cyclochia-style open streets event could be done to launch this, and I'm happy to help with that. I also urge the council to use the relevant social media channels and signage along the route to tell road cyclists to slow right down, as this is now a shared path and no longer a road. Initial marshalling may be needed to make these faster cyclists aware of this situation, particularly during the first weekend. Ideally, this initiative would also tackle the narrow access rate between the Merama Cutting and Shelly Bay, but I appreciate that it's a bridge too far right now. However, we should have signage to urge drivers to give priority to walkers and cyclists who want to get access to Shelly Bay and beyond that. We need to use this opportunity, also think of the longer-term solution to make the full Merama Peninsula route safe for people on foot, bike and scooter. Let's keep our streets people-friendly, that's me.
Ron, thank you, and thank you for being so quick with the time. I've got a question from councillor O'Neill, and then I'm going to ask one, then councillor Rush at the stage. Oh, councillor Foom, I'll take councillor Foom, because councillor Rush is off serial, councillor O'Neill.
Thank you so much for presenting today. I'm quite familiar now with the Scorching Bay and Shelly Bay proposal for a shared path. Currently, we have in our proposal, we're blocking off one of the car lanes and having everyone in there as a shared lane. How do you share that shared space operating between pedestrians, cyclists and the community?
It's, in a way, it's not ideal, because as we have with footpaths, you try and avoid that sharing between cyclists and pedestrians. In this case, as a temporary solution, like I say, it is a trial. If you see it as a trial, then it's a great opportunity to see if that's good enough, or to adjust it as required. But it does really mean that cyclists need to absolutely take care. And yes, sharing means caring for each other, everybody takes part in doing that. During the Cyclochia offence, that worked really well. It was the number of people that helped with that. So as it becomes a normal ability to do this during the day, any day, maybe less people at times, which actually encourages cyclists to go a little bit faster. They just need to be prepared to slow right down. It's just common courtesy, and hopefully, common sense prevails.
Thanks, and a quick question from me, Ron. Just in respect of the Great Harbour Way, the section, actually another section outside of our area, Patoni through to Naronga, I just wondered if you have any thoughts about the potential for accelerating that with both the shovel ready and the RMA changes?
Yeah.
Horrible in your view?
I'm really looking forward to the government changes enabling that project to be fast-tracked. I do appreciate as well that it has to have the opportunity to make sure that, particularly from an environmental perspective, has all the right things done to protect existing wildlife and to actually protect that coastline into the future. But yeah, everybody wants that to happen sooner rather than later, so a great opportunity.
Yeah, thanks, Ron, I'm into that one. Really appreciate you being here, Ron, good to see you. And again, if you want to hop on to the YouTube, you know, we welcome that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Steve Bilby.
Go on.
Nice to have you here.
Yeah, thank you, and I'm known to one or two of you, I'm a dock ranger, I work up at Kenipuru. Been cycling to work in your city for 27 years, mostly into the CBD. I've been appearing in support of the Innovating Streets Fund, and my submission's use, simple, is go for it, go for it big. And in particular, I'm going to give you a couple of examples where you need to do the long list, not the shortlist. Firstly, can I just acknowledge some of the good work? I've been, as I said, I've been riding for 27 years in this city, some great work has been done. I particularly referenced the new cycle path at Kaipara Pura. Unfortunately, arrived after I left after 25 years of cycling along there, but it's a work of genius, and I thank you for it. But my message to you in supporting these projects is there's just so much more to be done. You know this, you're only scratching the surface. My message is that vehicle numbers, size and speed have grown in the 45 years that I've been cycling, and driver behaviours plummeted. And our streets, and particularly their width, have not grown to accommodate. So I'm pleased, for example, to see on the shortlist, you've got, for example, Fediston Street, which I rode down for 25 years, and was always the riskiest part of my ride. So whether it's part of COVID or longer, that street needs to be restructured to pay respect to cyclists, I support that. The reason I want you to look at the long list and to think outside the central city, including referring to councillor Sparrow's point into the northern suburbs, is that I've been riding up Naronga Gorge through Johnsonville and Tawa to Kenipuru the last couple of years. I need to emphasise to you that that is the only cycling route for cyclists in and out of the capital city. If a tourist lands at Wellington Airport and wants to go north, they only have that route. I'm riding on roads there I would not ride on because they are unsafe, but that I have no option. Now, the council's assessment of those roads does not match that risk profile. Your cousins in Auckland are doing way better. You can move right through Auckland, in and out of their airport, on equivalent routes, way better. We need to catch up in Wellington. The main gap in that northern route is Middleton Road, and I here wanted to acknowledge councillor Conde for helping me on this earlier this year, between Glenhope and Tawa. It's on your long list. It's in desperate need of an upgrade to bring it up to minimum safety standards for cyclists. This is easily the most risky road I've ridden in 45 years. The road is very narrow, it was built for Morris miners going 30 miles per hour. It is now a rat-run for SUVs, twin cab utes and trucks taking the whole road with, and frequently failing to meet the 70 kilometre an hour speed limit. I would not ride this road if I had any alternative. It's 2.5 kilometres long, the road surface is broken, and it should have been resurfaced 10 years ago. It's nowhere near the standard of roads in Johnsonville and Tawa. There are no refuges for cyclists, or only few refuges for cyclists on the side of the road in regular vehicle accidents, I've seen three myself in the last 18 months. There is no council expenditure scheduled on it till 2027 or 2028, I simply don't understand why. So either through this innovative street fund long list, or somehow, you need to bring that road up, please, up to standard, please do. Can I briefly mention the second main gap in that northern route is the Naronga Gorge? Now, there is a recently signed-off plan that NZTA has laid for short-term and long-term improvement of Naronga Gorge. It is also unsafe for cyclists.
You've got one minute, Steve.
Thank you, the only thing I wanted to say about that is, please understand that you are responsible, Wellington City is responsible for the worst sections of the gorge. Please support the plan that is unfolding for Naronga Gorge. And lastly, can I just say quickly, as one of the early speakers, that in the paper you've got on innovative streets, as far as I can read it, the weighting given to cyclist safety is 2.5%. 50% weighting is given to whether the council is at risk of ratepayer adverse response for these innovative fund proposals. You may want to correct that, I don't think any cyclist in Wellington wants to know that the safety weighting in that paper is 2.5%. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephen, you have actually taken the whole time, so I will need to move on. But thank you, thank you for the work you do for Dock, and thanks for taking the cycling journey to work as well from that distance.
Thank you.
Stay safe, and again, if you wish to hop on the YouTube again, we welcome you doing that.
Okay.
Thank you. Mary Anderson, Mary, where are you?
I'm Mary.
Oh, you don't look like Mary.
No, I'm just... So we were just wanting to promote the case for putting in a one-way.
I think if you could introduce it.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, Thomas Woodslaf from Enterprise Ramar and the MAMAP. And we were just wanted to talk in relation, briefly, in relation to the submission for, which is consistent with the Great Harbour Way, which is, and what we were wanting to promote is making from Shelly Bay to Scorching Bay, one-way for motorised traffic and cyclists, and then in one-way. And then making it a shared cycle walkway frame, walkway and frames and cycle route for the other lane against the coast. It's been very interesting in recent times with the significant reduction in traffic, and a lot of people have been looking at that rate. It's still relatively unsafe, particularly as produced there. And that's which is concerning, and I think it's been very, very popular. It's really quite therapeutic, and a lot of young kids on it now with the perfect, and a lot more elderly people walking there. And we think it's also, the proposal is consistent, as I said, with Great Harbour Way, it promotes area being developed, which is also consistent, which is to promote your as a coastal park and part of the walking and cycling route around the entire harbour. And it's also meets the particular of the council's long-term strategy, Wellington forward 2040, smart capital in the urban spaces. We've also put out a petition recently on your council site to engage people if they're for and against, apparently it's at 197. Recently, we also put up a Facebook page, which had a phenomenal amount of predominantly positive comments from, we'll speak from basically, people who, you know, from cyclist walkers, people that have never really thought they could enjoy it before, because of the weird traffic. Yeah, it's a shame it doesn't get utilised a lot more, but it's largely because, I don't know, even I find it myself, walking around it at times, you get missed, basically, with oncoming traffic coming towards you. And nowhere to go, flipped into the sea on some corners. And also, obviously promoting it for people that use it for picnicking, diving, fishing and boating. Which would obviously require places where they could make it cross. That's pretty much all.
Thomas, thank you very much, good to hear from you, quite hard to hear you at times there, but I think we got the gist of it all. Deputy Mayor Free.
So, Thomas, you are the Chair of the Business Improvement District for Merama. So I was going to ask, what do you think the view of most businesses in Merama is about this proposal? Are they generally supportive?
Generally very supportive, yes. But it's, I think it's, a lot of them are probably compliments, particularly those who are currently being hit with the turn-down in cafes and the like, it brings people to the area, consistent with it being a recreational activity. We've noticed quite an increase in particularly the new bike tracks that run down through into Park Road. So it sort of ties in with that, so I think a lot of, they're more quite serious off-road bikers. That, yes, so generally, we haven't had, there's been some negative comments on it, or some of it's just confusion. Some of the serious bikers, they see it, they were concerned that it might be the ability to go around there at speed. Well, there's nothing preventing them from driving in the car lane, and we feel the car lane should be, the speed limit should be reduced, except for a speed of a reasonably fast, serious bike. So they're all travelling at the same speed. There would, thought would need to be put in for, there's no reason why people wheelchairs, prams and the like, you see it now, but it's frightening, because they can't suddenly skip off the road in a hurry. So there's no reason why they don't pay for a wide spectrum, including the serious cyclists.
Thomas, thank you very much, really appreciate you coming here and talking to us. And again, if you want to hop on to the YouTube, we welcome you doing that, and we look forward to catching up sometime soon.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Thomas.
You're welcome.
And last but by no means least, Kevin Ishwood and Felicity Wong from Oriental Bay. I did say Felicity there somewhere, hi Felicity.
Okay, can you hear me all right?
We can.
Okay, well, thank you very much for inviting.
We can't see you though, Kevin.
Oh, dear, how do I do that?
There should be a video, bring you down at the bottom of your...
Oh, sorry, yeah, 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 got it.
So it's a good learning experience, all this zooming. Right, Kevin, well, welcome, Kevin, yep.
Well, thank you very much for inviting the Oriental Bay Residents Association to present to you today. We're here to present the interests of the wider Wellington region and the rights of all Wellingtonians to have access to the Oriental Bay beach and the promenade. While we understand Oriental Bay has for now been moved off the agenda as a location for a cycle lane, with no doubt it will be a very strong push to have it reinstated. Oriental Bay is a safe and friendly meeting place, which is currently in easy reach for everyone, families, the disabled, elderly cyclists, runners and walkers. Removing the car parks will reduce drastically the ability for the vast majority of Wellingtonians to use what everyone rightly claims as their city beach. We ask, how do you weigh the rights of the wider Wellingtonians? We ask, how do you weigh the rights of the wider Wellington public to drive to their beach against those of a narrow group of cyclists to use it for the most part as a transitory route to get from A to B? The interests of cyclists are already very well served by the existing cycle lane from Herd Street to the Freiburg Pool. If the speed limit on Oriental Parade is reduced, cyclists could continue safely along the short stretch of that road to the new cycleway that starts at Carlton Gaul Road. And children could continue to cycle along the footpath under the supervision of their parents. Moreover, the consequences of removing the angle parking will be disastrous for local businesses. These businesses rely on custom from the wider Wellington region. We surveyed and interviewed 10 of them, shine hairdressers, the bars, cafes and restaurants, Coens, Bernies, Gelatissimo, Lowest Days, Corellis, Beach Babylon, Pomelo and Patel's Dairy. 80% of their income is derived from people outside of the Bay area. These businesses have suffered enough during the current health crisis. Just as they see the possibility of getting back on their feet, they face the loss of 80% of their income would spell disaster for all of them. Suicidal was how Mr Patel put it, Charlotte from Beach Babylon. How could they possibly do this to us? The last thing Wellington is to be pulled apart over a cycle lane. We need to come together and act in the interest and rights of all Wellingtonians. And now I'd like to pass to Felicity Wong.
Hi Felicity, welcome.
Hi, thank you. And thank you to the Limpson Ward councillors for talking to us a bit yesterday. Look, Oriental Bay residents have a lot of experience and a lot of data about the use of Oriental Bay and how loved it is by all Wellingtonians. And we're happy to share our data with the council if you'd like that in due course. There's three things we'd like to talk about in terms of the accessible, the submission on the NZTA proposals. One is around transport devices and footpaths, the other's around speed limits and the third thing is around giving up the right to create your own rules at a local level by road controlling authorities. So our first point is that we agree with the submission that the Wellington City Council is proposing to make on question 13, where you disagree with the proposal to automatically allow transport devices and cycles on footpaths. And we would want you to be even stronger. And as Laura and some of the other citizens say, the rights of disabled folks and so on are critical here. We shouldn't as a right allow transport devices and cycles on footpaths. Turning to speed limits, we think the 15 kilometre proposal that Wellington's city council is proposing to make for footpaths, we think that's too high. It should be 10 kilometres, which is one of the proposals in the government package. 15 is too high for a footpath and a default of 50 for a shared path or the speed limit of the adjacent road, which in Oriental Bay's case would be 40 kilometres. So under the government proposal, the speed limit on Oriental Bay paved area next to the beach would be 40 kilometres. This is outrageous and Wellington City Council is proposing this. Lastly, you know, there's two questions, 17 and 24, which the government proposes. The government proposes that road controlling authorities should be able to make local rules and the Wellington City Council paper opposes that. So Wellington is suggesting giving up the right to create local, local solutions for local Wellington roads, paths, shared paths and footpaths. And again, we really recommend you, you, you have a look at that. It's a democratic deficit to give up the power of Wellington ratepayers to make local rules. Thank you.
Thank you both, Kevin and Felicity. Really appreciate that. The time, time is up. But we really appreciate you coming and speaking to us. And again, if you want to hop onto the, the YouTube, we welcome you doing that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, councillors, that brings us to the end of the public participation. What we're going to do, as I signaled before, is we'll take a break at 3.30. Hopefully by that stage, that roughly speaking, or roughly 3.30, that will roughly speaking be the timeframe to get through the first paper, which is the one on the convention centre. So I'm going to pass that to councillor Conde to introduce.
Thank you, Mayor Foster. All right. So the first paper we have is around the Wellington Convention and Exhibition Centre and the roading and traffic and parking changes that we need just to create better, to allow detailed design for this to proceed. So we're, we're approving these traffic resolutions so that detailed design can proceed alongside the construction that's happening at the moment. The building was designed with no onsite parking because we, it was designed with the philosophy of moving more people with fewer vehicles and a climate friendly building that, that wouldn't encourage people to drive to it. So that means that we have to have really well designed pedestrian access for this building and excellent drop off facilities as well. These changes will also eventually provide a laneway that will connect to Papa to Courtney Place with pedestrian crossings across that, which will really improve the pedestrian access to that part of our city. And I'd just like to thank officers who have also included an additional amendment looking at motorcycle parking, saying that they will investigate possibilities to find some, some new site for motorcycle parking nearby, just to mitigate the impact that we're having on, on those road users with these recommendations. And so with that, I'm, I'm happy to move the paper. Do I have a second there? Missed off that organised.
You want to say it? Councillor Calvert?
Your worship.
Worship.
Your worship, this is, sorry, Donna must have lost connection. We should have suspended standing orders and.
Ah, yes, yes. Thank you for leaping in. Thank you. Yes. Sorry, my fault for missing that one.
Back to everything and start again councillor Conde, sorry.
All right.
Okay. So councillor Conde didn't stand up anyway at that stage. Anyway, I missed that. So councillors, it's, thank you Cyrus for bringing me up on that one. So we're going to again do what we've done in every other one of these Zoom meetings, which is to temporarily suspend standing order 16.5 and 27.7. So we don't have to stand up and that we don't have divisions by show of hands. We've got the technology there. So I'm going to move that seconded by, I can see councillor Pannett there on the screen. Thank you. If you can all vote accordingly. That's done. Thank you. That's passed unanimously. Councillor Conde, you want to reintroduce? That was an excellent reintroduction. Well done.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Very well spoken. Right. Second to councillor Calvert.
Hold on, we've got Cyrus trying to say something.
Sorry Cyrus, can't hear you at all.
The agenda items, the reordering of agenda items has to be also formally done.
Okay, right. We'll do that formally then. So we're reordering the agenda. So we're taking this item first, then we will take the accessible streets and then we'll take, sorry, the the innovative streets and then we'll take the accessible streets. If people are happy with that. So we'll move that one as well.
Just. No, I'm happy to, I'm happy to second that.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor, yep.
Just by the end, can't speak yet.
Done. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Right. That takes us back. Councillor Conde has spoken under that rearrangement as well. Gosh, it's excellently quick speech.
Lovely. And, and then obviously thank you councillor Calvert for seconding the paper.
Councillor Calvert, do you wish to speak?
Just very, very briefly, look, this is something, should be relatively simple. It's, it's been well thought through, through by our, our traffic officers. And, and it's something, it's another, another tick in the box for the, for the convention and event centre, which come 2023 is going to be something really positive for our city. So, well done.
Thank you councillor Calvert. Councillor Young, did you wish to speak? No, it was a no, was it?
I can't think why you think I want to speak.
Well, because you raised your hand earlier.
No, that was.
Who of you raised a second? So I wasn't sure.
From here.
I just, just want to check. Okay. Does anybody else wish to speak on this, this item? Councillor Rush.
Yeah, I'm proposing an amendment. I felt we could amplify the really good work that officers and design team have done to make this building climate friendly. And I just felt that the paper possibly didn't do justice to that work. So I have proposed that amendment, which Cyrus has got, it's, it's got sort of lukewarm officer support, I suppose. I am looking for a seconder. Is councillor Panic going to be that seconder? There we go.
Councillor Rush, I, I welcome the sentiment. The only thing is that those things are statements of fact that we've already done. And I think if we all spend all our time congratulating ourselves at how well we've done any individual paper, we are going to get ourselves in a very difficult position. So regrettably, actually, I think understanding all is like, I'm not supposed to accept it anyway, so I won't. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I just want to say that I'm actually quite excited about thinking how the road's going to work and knowing that our officers have thought about the people that are going to experience our new events and convention centre and imagining how, what it's going to be like to actually have that pedestrian connection right through it, makes it start to seem like it's, it's actually happening. So I'm, I'm, I think this is actually quite an exciting, exciting thing to be doing.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Councillor Pannett.
Just briefly, I just wanted to thank the last council for supporting that amendment to spend $750,000 to make this building a green start building. So I am also looking forward to that. Thank you councillor Rush for your environmental commitment.
Thanks councillor Pannett. And I'm just going to say something very briefly, and that is also with councillor Pannett. I thought you would pick up the opportunity to say that it was you and I who were particularly keen to make sure that we had that pedestrian connection. So this is a, this is a really, really important pedestrian connection between To Papa and effectively through to Courtney Place. And so both the design of the building itself and then the design of the on-street crossings, I think will be a really immensely important part of our city. And as a city sort of comes back to life again, as the convention centre and convention exhibition centre is, is up and running and drawing people to that part of the city. This will, this will really bring a lot more life to that part of our city. So really looking forward to that. And it is another step. There will be a lot of other exciting steps over the next few months in respect of this building. And we will look forward to sharing those with people in due course. I don't see anyone else. So councillor Conde, write a reply.
I'll just say how delightful and shocking it is for us to have an exciting traffic resolution, as the deputy mayor has said. It's my great pleasure to bring you an exciting traffic resolution.
Thank you councillor Conde. Okay, we will vote. That has passed unanimously. Well done. Thank you councillor Conde. Now, we were going to break at 3.30. We could have the introduction to the paper and then break, or you want, I've seen shaking of heads, so you'd rather take the break now? Okay, we'll take, we'll take the break now. Sorry councillor Cyrus.
Yeah, that's good because we're having tough technical problems. It's good if we go on a break right now.
Okay. So you want 10 minutes Cyrus?
Yes, that would be good. Thank you.
10 is okay. Okay. We'll take 10 minutes now. Just, can I just tell you also, just please make sure you are muted. Because the danger is that if you're not muted, that what you say, and I gather some of the sides were picked up between councillors at some previous meeting, it's that, it's the sort of feather duster and short sort of danger that you run yourself into. So we'll come back, we'll come back in 10 minutes' time at 25.2.
And to stop your video.
And you might want to stop your video too, yes. Oh shit. Cyrus, will you let us know when you're ready to start again?
Andy, could I ask you something before we resume very briefly?
Sure, sure.
Um, do you think-
He's been councillor, we're live streaming currently.
Yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a basic question about time, don't worry. I'm just sorry, thank you Heidi. Is it okay, or do you think we'll finish at five on the dot? Because I'm on a panel at 5pm and I just need to let them know. If I will be able to make it or not.
Councillor Paul, I will be very rash to make any judgement about that because that is in your collective hands. So, so I, I don't, the answer is I don't know. Right, okay, we're all on. We've got 15 of us there. I think we have, yes, right, okay, we're good to go. So deputy mayor free, we will start with the innovating streets package.
Everybody, Tenakoto Katoa. It really is my pleasure to introduce this paper. There's clearly been a lot of work gone into this. So we have put in an application for the innovating streets fund, which has arisen as a result really of the COVID crisis. And during the period of level four lockdown, we've seen, as has been commented by many participants, huge numbers of people cycling and walking, which might not necessarily be reflected in our traditional counters. Because of course, a lot of the trips and cycling and walking has been done locally. But I think what people have observed with their own eyes is there's never been so many different types of people actually trying out biking and out there enjoying our wonderful natural environment and our reserves and walking. So the need for social distancing will be ongoing for some time. And as people come back to the city, it does make sense to try and provide a little bit more space for cycling and walking and for social. The officers have involved us in the process. They've started with a very long list of projects which might have met the criteria. And they've divided them up into ward by ward lists. And they have actually asked us for feedback. And that's been really appreciated because a lot of what's gone on in other parts of the country has been done very rapidly and without much elected member or community feedback, as Auckland Transport's work, which I'll comment on a little bit later. So we have had feedback about the criteria that they've used in terms of the risk rating and how that's been perceived as being all about car parking. I think that's probably, there's probably a more nuanced approach in effect to the risk. It hasn't all been about car parking, but it has been about our ability to deliver these quite quickly. With some councillor, elected member and community feedback, but not necessarily the kind of feedback that we'd have if we were not doing this in a crisis situation. So the idea of risk is around, some, some of it's around car parking, some of it's just about disruption. And, and the ability for us to do projects that we know are worth doing, but are also not going to actually cause the kind of disruption that would derail our future ability to, to keep on doing really good cycling and walking projects. We want these projects to be well accepted and to do what they're intended to do without too many adverse or unintended consequences. I do just want to talk about Auckland Transport because that's put the bar really, really high. When we, our community was aware, they were able to put in 17 kilometres of cycleways. Firstly, they are slightly, they operate under slightly different legislation to us. They have got more powers, they've also got big budget, they've also got slight, somewhat more road space to play with. But as we've seen that they have had some difficulties with that, they've had some pushback from their, from other elected members and from communities. And they have, I believe, even had to take out 350 metres of what they put in. So you know, that's the pluses and the minuses about going about things somewhat, in a somewhat more slower, but maybe more lasting way. And, but we do want to respond as much as we can with budgets and the staff availability we have to actually bring on some more projects, provided that we can get these ones approved and funded. We'll see how we go. I think it's really important that we do try. Now, we've got a list, we've heard from the public feedback about this list has generally been that these projects are well supported. You know, they'd like more, but these are good projects. And I believe we should actually approve these projects, get them loaded, post it off to NZTA and find out if they'll get supported with funding and then we can actually go further and do more perhaps if we can. Um, I do stand by the work that the officers have done in this paper. I think, you know, they're working under pressures, they're like the rest of us, they're working on their dining room tables and their studies and their bedrooms to actually try and get the stuff done. And I think they've actually done a fantastic job. You know, I stand by, you know, the work that they've done and the judgements they've made. We have heard some criticism of various aspects of the, of the risks of the framework they've used. I think you can nitpick about that, but I think actually the, the results that have come from this process have actually been fairly sound. And we've also interestingly heard though, that it's time to move out into the west suburbs and the northern suburbs. And I think that it's interesting that that message is really coming to us now. You know, a lot has been done in the east, we are doing stuff in the CBD. We'd like to do a little more in the south, but it's a little bit tied up with the let's get Willie moving process, but there really isn't much reason, I think, why we shouldn't actually try to accelerate some delivery in the western and northern wards. And that goes for pedestrian improvements as well. So definitely committed to see what we can do there. And of course, this work we're doing with these, this innovating streets package is complementary to all the work we're doing through our normal urban cycleway delivery programme, through our slower speeds in the CBD, which we are also working at pace to deliver. And through our suburban 30k speed limits, we're also working on that in the, in the western ward up in Cororia, Marston Village. And of course, our ongoing work too on pedestrian improvements, such as the traffic resolutions we just approved prior to our break. I'm really very happy to bring this paper to you. I think it comes with officer-approved amendments. I haven't actually seen the paper in its entirety since we so I am moving a pro forma with those, or maybe that they're officer-approved, someone might just have to fill me in on the process for that. And I believe councillor Conde is-
They are, they are, they are, they are coming with officer endorsement. And so you're very happy to, very happy that you move them all as one.
Okay, so I move and I believe councillor Conde is seconding. And thank you to councillor Conde for a lot of support in this work. And, and also has worked very closely with our officers to get to this result.
Thank you deputy mayor. Councillor Conde, do you want to speak at this stage?
I'll reserve my right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Right, anyone else who wishes to speak? So is there a hand up there councillor? Okay, right, okay, well I've got several hands all up at once there. Right, I've got councillor Matthews, Panic, Dave Fitzsimons. Okay, we'll take it in that order. Oh no, can I just check, are there any amendments? Okay, doesn't look like it. Okay, that's fine. Okay, and then councillor Thun, so right.
Just doing councillor Rush's favour, his hand up, his hand was up first.
Oh, was it? Okay, right, I didn't see where it went up. So, so, right, okay. We do councillor Matthews, Panic, Dave Fitzsimons, Rush, oh sorry, Rush and Thun. Okay, councillor Matthews.
Goro Katoa, I, I guess, I'd also want to thank officers for their work and, you know, under very difficult circumstances and to do this under a short period of time, to sort of come up with a package. And I do note that it is widely supported. I guess when I, when I first saw that the proposals put before us, my initial question was, there is Karori. And I think there are particular issues for Karori in this, you know, in this post-COVID environment. Already there was a public transport system which was bursting at the seams. And I mean, anybody who's caught the bus into town from Karori in the morning knows that you would need to do social distancing on that bus, you would need to probably have about 20% only of the passengers on there. So, and already passing by people. So I definitely think, you know, and I've heard very strongly from the community about both those who currently cycle and feel unsafe, those that want to cycle. And you know, that they really, and want their children to be able to do so. So I, you know, particularly want to progress that work. I'm quite impatient, so I'm keen to do that as quickly as possible and working with officers in the community to deliver safe, accessible cycling infrastructure. And throughout the Farangani Ward, I want to shout out to Andrea from Northland, whenever I talk to her, she asks me about bike lanes. And I guess I do want to comment briefly on the, on the risk, you know, so I've, I've had my, it might be nitpicking, but I, I also, my forgive me for talking about myself in the third person, but the Rebecca risk rating would be somewhat different. And I really think that we do need to continue to look at the risk in terms of the safety for those that are cycling, but also the risk of not only doing nothing in some places, but doing too little or going too slowly. And I think those are all important factors in a post-COVID environment. So I'm pleased that we're going to be able to do this, but I think that we've got a very keen sense now of the impatience of the community to do more and to do more, not just in the CBD, but in our suburbs. And I myself am extremely committed to do that and progress that in this term. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Matthews. Councillor?
Hey, was it me? It was me, sorry. Sorry, I just stood here, Andy, sorry.
I was wondering, but the pause was getting along.
Yeah, sorry. Look, I would just also like to thank officers, yes, working at your dining room table. It's not an easy way to pull a package like this together. I'd also like to thank councillors Free and Conde for their leadership in this area, it's very much appreciated. And I think a lot of exciting things are gonna happen this trainium. Look, I think we just need to see this as one of the best gifts that the government has ever given the city. 90% funding to act quickly, a 48-hour turnaround for decisions. And, and they'll actually pay for staff, they will pay for project management expertise, communications and so on, which is fantastic. So we know that staff are under the pump and actually this fund gives us capacity to help with that particular issue. Like some of you, I'm sure my Twitter feed has been running hot with comments like, you know, you need to do more. The people I represent want us to do a lot and quickly and see this as a wonderful opportunity, apart from anything, to trial some things out. We are going to need to continue to be safe for some time. This is not going to be for a month or two. Until there is a vaccine or there's enough community immunity, we are not safe. And obviously, we don't want a resurgence of the virus when we get down to a lower level and then have to go back into a higher level. That would be very unsafe. So we're going, this is going to be our norm. So it is important that we do as much as possible, as quickly as possible. I will make a plea for Bokihe now, given that the CBD is in our ward. And most people do end up there at some point, that does have to be a priority. I thought possibly some of the projects were a little bit light there, just given what we need to do. But, but I do take councillor Matthews' point that we do need to think about the suburbs as well because obviously a lot of people will continue to work from home and have to do their, their ordinary life. But look, I think it's good, I'm desperate to do more as quickly as possible and take the assurance of the portfolio leaders that we will be able to hopefully go and for another round. And a really big thanks to the government because this is incredibly generous and they've moved so fast, which is fantastic.
Thank you councillor Panic. Councillor Day?
Kiala Ano. I did it twice.
We've got sticky keys here then.
Oh, I think there's a bit of glitching going on today as well. I'd like to just say that I'm really excited about what is proposed. And I want to thank the officers for, for their hard work trying to pull this together really quickly. Of course, we always want to have everything, we want our cake and we want to be able to eat it too. And so I completely understand everyone's excitement and at the same time disappointment that we can't do everything. But I really want to thank the staff for their work and for, I mean, if anyone is passionate about this, it is our staff. They're all cycling enthusiasts and want to see our city be the best, the best it can be for cyclists. I have to say, when I first saw the information about this and I saw that the risk level about parking was there, I realised perspective is everything because as a cyclist, my first interpretation of the risk of parking was about being doored. And so I thought that it was more about the risk of the, of the parking on the side of the road for the cyclist rather than the loss of the parking. So I thought it was quite an interesting perspective. As a cyclist, you see it from a totally different, different angle. And I do want to say, out in the suburbs, people are out cycling and on mass. And it's really exciting. And actually, the number of young people out cycling is really exciting as well, but not just young people, also older people who maybe haven't jumped on a bike for a while and have got their confidence back, which is really great. I do want to, I do want to speak to the submitters who spoke about the western and northern suburbs and improving infrastructure. They're absolutely right. We have some amazing connections into the city that with, with a bit of work could be really great for our cyclists. Our one up to the north connects a huge population and with our city. And if we can improve that, it will make, make huge impacts on the way that people move around. For me, commuting into the city on my e-bike, it takes me around about 40 minutes. In Russia, it takes me about 35 to 40 minutes in my car. So it's actually really comparable and it's much more enjoyable than, than sitting in my car. You know, thinking about how much that's costing me. But I also do want to speak to the, the fact that we're speaking next to a paper about, about our footpaths and just the risks with not having a good cycling network and our paths. Because we have spots on our, on my commute where on a push bike, not an e-bike, an e-bike's fine, but on a push bike, it's quite scary moving around parked cars up a hill. And I think that's where we've got to get that working pretty quickly because as a, as a new cyclist, there's no way people want to be exposed going uphill, having to go around cars and, and the, and the risk that that has with being doored at the same time. And I also just want to speak quickly to our submitter about Titi Riti Uwataangi. And just want to say, yes, I was disappointed to see it not included in the, in the supporting information. I think councillor Paul for also pointing that out on Tuesday because there are significant issues there, particularly where our cycleways go along our coast and, and impact on people's access to, to the water, to our moana. And so I think it's really important that we do see that acknowledged and expressed through, through the papers. But I do know that our staff are working hard to, to talk with Manu Finora about this. And so I thank councillor Paul for raising that on Tuesday and really appreciate that. And I hope that in the future, I know that councillor Panic's been raising it for years about the climate change impacts, that actually everything we do has an impact. And as we keep saying, Manu Finora have, have the right to be able to be involved all the way along with all of our, our papers and our processes. So thank you.
Thanks councillor Day. And I think there are probably several things that we need to put into our, our template of how papers are constructed. Councillors Fitzsimons, then Rush, then Thun.
Can I just ask that we, uh, see the amendment that went in late? I just haven't, I can't find it on, on the emails. And I just didn't get enough of a chance to read it. Okay, great. Uh, thank you. Um, and I just want to join with others in, uh, thanking officers for, uh, the work that went into this paper. And I also really want to acknowledge the leadership of deputy mayor Sarah Free on, uh, improving the cycleway network around Wellington. Because she has been tireless in her commitment to improving cycleway infrastructure and a very active councillor at working with a whole range of communities to make the cycleways actually workable and to bring the community on board and supporting them. And I've seen in my community, the damage you can do to people's faith in public institutions if you don't do that properly. So I just really want to say, um, that that's really important. And I really support these, uh, these temporary measures. And I particularly want to, uh, speak about the, um, pop-up uphill cycle lane on Brooklyn Road. Because, um, unfortunately, I, I have had some people in the community raise concerns about this. And I just want to acknowledge Perry S. Ross and the Brooklyn Residents Association, who did raise concerns with me. Uh, and they were worried about the impact of this pop-up cycleway. And they were, it's fair to say, cynical about its temporary nature. And I guess I want to, um, I foolishly suggested that Perry come along to, uh, public participation, forgetting that there's a deadline and probably already other people who were lined up to come. So I did particularly want to acknowledge that he did want to come and speak. Um, and I think the thing that I want to say, uh, to people like Perry is that I understand that we need to bring you and bring the community on board and supporting, uh, the development of cycleway infrastructure. And it doesn't mean it has to slow it down, but it does mean that we need to be genuinely open to listening to the community. And there will be another opportunity to have a say here. This is just an application to the government's, uh, innovating streets funding framework. And there will be another opportunity, uh, to have more say on this. And look, I certainly am open to listening. But on the face of it, I think it's a really exciting opportunity for Brooklyn. And the other thing I just wanted to acknowledge in the amendment that the deputy mayor added, uh, later in the piece was the commitment to speeding up the lowering of speeds, um, which I think is a really, really important initiative, particularly for making cycling safer in this period. And the quicker that we can reduce speeds, uh, the better, in my view. So I'm really pleased to see that as part of the clear commitment of this package.
Thank you councillor Fitzsimons, councillor Rush. And then I've got councillor Thun. And I see councillor Cowell's, uh, hand, blue hand up here.
Thank you, your worship. I, I won't be supporting this package. Um, yes, people have been out walking and some cycling. There's a big spike the day before we went to lockdown at Berx and Tilberney of 23 site sales, but they haven't been selling any while in lockdown. But the innovative streets package in the COVID context was designed to assist councils get their people back commuting to town safely. And it's supposed to be a, a quick trial of new layouts. I don't think that this package will do either. We need to make sure that all our commuters are safe when they get into town. This includes people from outside Wellington City. We've got a duty to people in the Kapiti Coast, the Hut Valley and all the way through into town. The Greater Wellington Regional Council needs to be, uh, applauded for their efforts and what they are doing in respect to use of public transport, uh, distance protocols, um, fogging, uh, you know, desanitizing the, or sanitizing the, the, their equipment, their facilities, the buses, their trains. We're not doing any of this sort of thing. Central Wellington, believe it or not, so I, I did some research. And central Wellington is actually the most dense populated part of New Zealand. We've got a lot of open spaces, places where people touch doors, elevators. And yet, nothing is being done to make those COVID-free. When we look at actually who our people are that come into the city, commuter numbers show from the 2007, sorry, 13 census at least, that 65% commute motor vehicles. Now, 20% by public transport, 10% walk or jog, and it looks like about 4% cycle. Now, I accept that those numbers are probably a bit dated, but nevertheless, the overwhelming population of people we need to keep safe when they get into the city are those driving motor vehicles or using public transport. We know from our data that over winter months, 25% of cyclists choose to go travel in, in other ways. So if the infrastructure that supports the summer peak is adequate, um, then I suspect that we will have adequate infrastructure for cyclists during COVID-19 conditions. I've done some research, asking law firms, asking, um, uh, the Chamber of Commerce. I've asked a number of civil service departments. The expectation is that we will get 30 to 50% back under level two. People are working from home and they realise they've, they've adapted and they now can do that. They are not being encouraged to work unless absolutely necessary. Consequently, we need to understand what does that mean for our foot? Do we really need to make changes to add capacity for cyclists? And we can expect them to actually decline in number. Word is also that there are people scared to take public transport and will in fact drive a car.
Councillor Rush, I'm going to give you, uh, the extra minute.
Thank you, your worship. To friends and cyclist supporters, is this the way that you really wanted to implement these proposals? Under the cloud of COVID-19 emergency response provisions? No consultation, fast-tracking of controversial projects? Some of which, I, I totally agree, are, are great projects, but they are controversial. And I'm very concerned that actually we're going to both do it to service to the cycling community, community in the long term and actually, um, not make our city safe. And just for some other perspectives, on a traffic update site, someone posted, uh, the newspaper article about it. And the, the, the comments are totally opposite to those that we have heard today. And then I would warrant those that you get on Twitter. Tens of, what's about 35 comments, they're all really negative. So anyway, there are different perspectives. Yeah. So anyway, uh, as a consequence, I'm concerned that these good projects are going to be tainted by this process, that people have been saying to us, seize the opportunity, but we should not be sacrificing democracy throughout this period. And many of the councillors said exactly that.
Thank you councillor Rush. Thank you.
Thank you, worship.
Councillor Thun, and then councillor Cowell.
Tenar Koto, thank you to our WCC team who've worked so hard on this, bringing this work for us today. And to councillors Free and Conde for your amendments to improve the direction we're taking this. I also want to acknowledge all that have spoken today and all those that have reached out by email and social media to let us know your views. Um, I don't think it was just me who had the incredible experience during, during lockdown of seeing our streets being used in a different way, where people were using them to walk, run, art, and families were out enjoying cycling together. Wellington City had transformed to a sleepy beachside town where the streets were a shared place for all. This was able to happen because of the massive reduction of moving cars. And it gave us an insight of what our communities could be like if the streets were designed for people over cars. Now thankfully, we're about to emerge, re-emerge into normal life. And thanks to innovating streets, the funding, thanks to the government, we have an opportunity to support desired changes in the way we move that will support people to keep their distance. And while we certainly have some good projects proposed, I won't deny that I was also a little bit disappointed. Um, because I'd formed an expectation that we would be able to deliver the transformation that so many people out there have been asking for. Um, I want to focus on just a few aspects today. Um, one of them is that a few of us have asked, do we really need this? Well, on the data on our own website, in March, the WCC counted that there were, um, over two, nearly 213,000 trips. And that's an average of 7,000 trips per day, and many are missed because we don't have the counters everywhere. And our stat, Shaun, councillor Rush, say that 9% bike to work regularly and that 22% would prefer to bike to work. And the two main reasons why they don't is because that people biking, uh, they can't do it because of the, of the lack of dedicated infrastructure and traffic-related concerns. So there we go. There are a huge section of Wellington's, um, people commuting to work that we need to look after just as well. Um, also, I would like to speak that one of the main barriers we've got is the way that we are storing our cars on streets. It is hindering others from being able to use active modes of transport on our roads. And the storage mechanism is not serving us as a society. And this is something all of us in the city will need to address if we want to make the changes we need to. Also, I do want to, um, talk to our assessment criteria. Um, I, I respect, so many people have brought this up today, so we do need to look at the way we've communicated this. But this was a report, um, from 2017, turning the tide from Otago University, um, how to get from cars to active transport with policy recommendations that, um, consider social, natural and human capital when we're producing reports like this. And thirdly, the, the point that I want to make.
You need the extra minute too, by the way councillor Thun.
Cycling is good for business. We also quote this on our own website. And Alicia, I will be reaching out to you to get the information that you've got. Because benefits to retail, um, and Sam Fran said that 60% of merchants saw more residents shopping locally and 40% with merchants saw an increase in sales. So we need more stories like this. Um, I'll be looking forward to the exciting opportunities ahead. We've got a long way to go. So, um, as you said in an email, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm putting this out there, Mayor Foster, but many of the councillors are keen to accelerate this transformation and I am certainly one of them. So I will be voting for this paper. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Thun. I don't mind you sharing that one. It's going to be judicious about what we do share in terms of emails. Right, councillor Cowell.
Um, thank you. And, and look, for the, um, I'm still going to keep listening to the debate before I actually decide on, um, which way I'm going to vote or whether I'll just vote for some of the projects. Um, I, um, I'd also just like to thank the officers. I know it was a pretty tough deal for them to have to pull something together in such a short space of time. And, um, and, and also, um, you know, bring together all, all different views right across the, um, across our city. And, and I also want to, um, thank, um, deputy mayor Sarah Free and, and councillor Jenny Conde for, um, for talking with Simon Wolf and myself actually today. Because we had some ideas, knowing our, knowing the Ferangui Onze Western Ward and having worked with different people over the last few years. Um, there are a number of projects already in the pipeline that some of this, um, these funds could really help. Um, and a majority of them, uh, would really impact on our pedestrians and how people can move around the suburbs. And I know some of, some of us already referred to that we need to think more about what's happening in our suburbs and how we can help our suburbs, um, whether that be through cycling or through, um, better pedestrian access. So, um, and, and taking advice, we are going to move some, um, some ideas forward with officers for, in particular, for, um, for steps on Rangiora Ave in Kaifarfar, a couple of projects in Wadestown, in particular Saar Street, which has been without a footpath for, for, since it was put in and, and desperately needed for commuter routes. Um, um, better, um, traffic calming in Wadestown. And also, um, um, councillor Rebecca Matthews mentioned, um, Karori. You know, that's a prime spot for, um, and, and taking on board, um, Simon Wolf's suggestion for a trial bus, um, cycle lane, combined one, for heading into the city in the rush hour. Because we know those buses are chocka. So look, there's lots of opportunities, but I'm already very conscious that we're probably only eligible for about 700K of this initial funding, so we can't do it all. But I just want to also just call out that there seems to be this bad thing about car parks. But these car parks are actually used by people. People drive cars. People don't just drive cars to put them on the side of the road because they don't want it, you know, can't think of anything else better to do with them. You know, and I look at one, uh, one of the projects is Boomer Road. You know, people using that road are working in essential services. They're working in a rest home. They're often not that well-paid either. They're also supporting a local, um, childcare centre. And so, you know, sometimes it's the only way to get to work with the shifts that you use. So we've got to think about this. And we can't literally throw that out for some, um, to, um, try and improve something for somebody else. We've got to achieve that balance properly. And but we need to do.
I'll give you one moment.
Thank you. So look, I just think we just need to, um, be conscious of, you know, we are, our economy is being hit really hard. And we need to think about, you know, if we're making changes in one area, what is it going to impact? And we need people back in our CBD. We need people back in our pubs. We need people back in our shops, spending some money to help bring the vitality back to our CBD. And I don't want to do anything that's going to impact on it when we come back into level two, um, hopefully next week. So some of the CBD ideas, I'm, I'm still very unsure. Because I do not want to be a barrier for our economy getting kick-started again.
Thanks councillor Cowell. Anybody else? Councillor Con, the yes, because you, you didn't speak at the beginning, did you? So where you go?
I did not. Thank you, Mayor Foster. All right. Um, I just want to take my time to absolutely reject councillor Rush's suggestion that we are sacrificing democracy to fast-track controversial projects under the cloud of emergency powers. Um, I just, I, I can't reject that statement enough. Um, we've heard today that from so many people who are upset about the risk criteria because they felt it was putting parking above other safety requirements. But the reason that, that staff did that is because they were concerned about the fact that they were bringing these projects in at a time when there would be less of, less time for consultation with the community. And they were very conscious of that. And that they did not want to put, bring in, um, projects that would, would, you know, really, um, rile people up and get people, um, feeling like they had to, had to get involved. So, you know, staff have already been very conscious about that. And I would acknowledge that, that, for example, the Oriental Bay project is one of the ones that was not recommended because of concerns around the businesses that operate there. We heard from a, um, public participant today who said, how could they do this to us if we were to bring in a cycleway there? And let's, let's, I totally agree with councillor Thun. The evidence is cycleways are great for business. But at a time when business owners are stressed and in crisis, it's not a time to have a conversation with them about the statistics, about, you know, the impact this is going to have on retail. It's a time for us to just, to just let them get on with it. And that's what officers have done in this analysis. Um, so I think it's, it's clear we are going as fast as we legally can, um, with these projects. And people are disappointed that we are not going faster. Um, councillor Rush, you'll know that I've been working with, um, staff from Minister Gent's office this week to get legal advice about whether we could use our emergency powers to advance these projects more quickly. The illegal advice that we've had in-house is that we absolute, is that we cannot use our emergency powers to advance this. But we may, may find that that situation changes with, um, updated advice from NZTA. And I just want to acknowledge that when we vote for these papers, we are not voting for any kind of, there will be, there will be consultation. When we vote for these projects, there will be traffic resolutions. Those traffic resolutions will go out for two weeks of consultation with affected and interested parties. So this notion that we're somehow sacrificing democracy at this time is just absolutely misrepresents what we're actually voting on in this paper today. I would also just disagree that, that, that this is somehow controversial. All of these projects are completely consistent with existing council plans and policies. This is not a radical change in direction here that we're, that we're bringing out because of the, because it's a crisis. This is all completely consistent with the direction this councillor has had for some time. With, um, with, we've voted for Teata Kura and mode shift is an important part of that, that strategy. We voted for Let's Get Wellington Moving and mode shift is an important part of that strategy. This is not a, a change in direction. This is just us moving ahead with some projects to make people feel safer at a time when they really need it. And I agree with you councillor Rush, um, Greater Wellington are doing great work in making people feel safe on public transport.
I'll give you another minute councillor Conde.
Thank you, Mayor Foster. Um, I disagree with you that we're not doing anything to help there. We absolutely are. This paper that you are intending to vote against has, um, emergency powers in it to make changes on Bunny Street, to make it safer for pedestrians who are exiting the train station. And it has an innovating streets proposal to widen footpaths on Stout Street to make it easier for pedestrians who are walking from the train station to the Golden Mile so that they can maintain a safe distance from each other. So this notion that we're not notion that we're not doing anything for these people, I utterly reject as well.
Thank you councillor Conde. I'm going to say a few words, because I can't see anybody else on the, on the list at the moment. Look, I want to first of all start out by thanking the officers for the hard work, whether it's been in, you know, on dining room tables or wherever it's been, but really appreciate the hard work that you've done during this lockdown period. I also want to thank all of our submitters, and what you've all encouraged us to do is to go faster, to be bolder, and I'll come back to that in just a moment. But I also want to thank all of the councillors too for your collective forbearance here, because there were some, you know, there were some risks that we got down into the weeds and we started picking individual projects here or there. And thank you all for resisting that temptation, because this is about, you know, looking at this at a governance, a governance level and be realistic about what we can do. And that's not about just about dollars, but also about our staff's time and ability to deliver, because they're not just looking at delivering the things, the temporary things, because these are temporary. They're also working very, very hard on delivering permanent things which will accelerate walking, cycling and public transport improvements and the transport transformation, which, which I believe this council very strongly wants to deliver. And I think that's the exciting thing. So this, what we've got in front of us is one initiative. It is, as councillor Conde said, exactly in line with the direction which we've been taking for some time. And I think in this training, I hope that we're able to deliver a lot more of that over these, over these next two and a half years. I think there's been some confusion about what is possible within this. And as I said in the introduction or at the beginning of the meeting, we are talking at the moment about seven million dollars. I think there was some confusion about whether there was some ability to access the underspend in walking and cycling across the country. And that is seven million across the country, of course. But if we were to start using the underspend in permanent, in investment in permanent walking and cycling, then some of the things that we talked about, I asked Ron Benning about the Patani Tuna Ronger, for example, you know, there is less money available for the things which will be around, not in three or four months, but around in five years, ten years, fifteen years. And they're the things that we will be continuing to enjoy. So I want us to keep investing in things which are permanent. And I think the thing is that people at the moment don't yet have the full visibility of those things which we're working at, working on through Let's Get Wellington Moving. And we are with the deputy mayor and councillor Conde when we attend the Let's Get Wellington Moving governance meetings, we are pushing hard to try and make sure that we get as much as possible done as fast as possible. And some of that's about funding, and some of that's about processes which we've got to go through in the engagement processes. But we are really keen to get as much done as possible. And some of those things we'll start seeing over the next weeks, the next months, as councillors are well aware. So I'm particularly enthusiastic about those projects which have potential ability to become pathways to permanence. And I look at the list of seven in particular and say, well, I think councillor Fitzsimons, you mentioned the uphill Brooklyn route. And I think you look at that and go, that's a pretty obvious potential pathway to permanence, but it needs to go through a process to get to that permanence. It can't just be put in there without going through the right process. Evans Bay Parade, I think we're also looking at, you know, as completing that route around the, around the waterfront. And I'm not sure of exactly the detail about the Onapurag extension, but I would assume that that is also potentially a pathway to permanence type proposition. I do share councillor Calvert's concerns about some of the CBD bits, but I think, you know, this is going to be a suck it and see thing. Because to start with, the CBD is not going to have as many people in it as it normally would do, because not everybody's going to come back to their offices all at once. That means there will be less people on public transport. It also means there'll be less people wanting to park in those areas like Stout Street, for example. So we're just going to watch this and see how it goes. And then I just want to finish off by saying, look, as the deputy mayor said in introducing this, we are accelerating the work which we're doing on thirty K safer speed limits in the central city. So we brought forward the hearings, so they're going to be next week. Officers are working hard so that if we approve those safer speed limits, that they were able to implement them faster than we were originally thinking. We have started the engagement on safer speeds in Karori, and I hope that we will also have those conversations in the northern suburbs to complete suburban centre network in terms of safer speeds. And the big plus about those safer speeds is that will then allow, and this sort of references the next paper, it will then allow walking, sorry, cycling and scootering to be done more safely on the road rather than on the footpath. And I think that would be a huge benefit in that. The final thing I wanted to say is just there's been quite a lot of comments about the waiting in car parking, according to car parking. And I must say, I looked at that and thought that was a bit curious, but there's two things I wanted to mention. The first one, I would took that as being, the issue there is about engagement. And when you start taking out significant amounts of car parking on streets, especially where people rely on it, you have to engage, you will have a lot of people submitting. And it means that the process is much longer. And that's very difficult when you're trying to get something in a temporary arrangement to be able to get that through in a timely manner and with a reasonable level of resource according, according, according to it. And as councillor Conde has said, we can't use emergency, we've been told we can't use emergency powers, and I think it would be wrong for us to do so, to just trample over people. And there was a comment made in public participation about car parking revenue. Look, the reality is, it is actually important to us. It's something like twenty-four million dollars, I think. So if we were to take out every car park in the CBD, as some people have suggested, that's a roughly seven percent rates increase, increase. And that's probably not going to go down terribly well. So, look, again, thank you everyone for the hard work. Thanks to the officers for the hard work. Thanks to the submitters for your work. And thank you councillors for what I have no doubt will be ringing endorsement of this paper. Councillor O'Neill, I see your hand up.
Yep, that was largely just to talk to a lot of the points already made and to thank a lot of the councillors for several, several weeks on this project and thinking and getting community involved as well. We've had a brilliant turnout for people. I'd especially like to thank councillor Foon and councillor Conde, because I know both of them have been advocating in plenty of circles, jumping on all sorts of different forms to make sure that people have their voice heard. And to thank councillor Matthews as well for her advocacy on making sure that this package is also accessible, that crosses over both papers too. One of our public participants this morning, Ron, I think, in between two sentences, when talking about innovating streets and tactical urbanism, when we look at accessibility, I think he said in between two sentences, sharing is caring. And that that is certainly seen throughout this package as well. And I really do invite an opportunity and a challenge to our communities to work with this really exciting new infrastructure, and to be able to progress and move forward with that stuff. We heard, I was lucky enough to hear from people in my own ward who had been campaigning on a cycleway that connected people into Shirley and Scorching Bay. And I think that's fantastic too. So, yeah, really pleased to support this. Again, wherever we can, we do try to make progressive change, and we do try to make innovating and tactical change. And I thank all the public participants and community for the engagement today. And I hope to see this trial go really well, because then it will give us more of a mandate to do much more stuff on cycling and shared.
Thank you councillor O'Neill. Your, your volume is keeping on coming and going. It's challenging, but thank you. That's everybody.
To write a reply.
Give me a write a reply, yes. Oh, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. And I was just making sure before I went to you, okay, where you go.
Yep. So, look, I'm going to keep it pretty, pretty brief, because actually, there's been a lot said, and I basically agree with most of it. I want to make three points, though. I do support us going out with traffic resolutions for this, because I've learned the hard way that if you don't follow process, it will come back to bite you. And the traffic resolutions will be the chance of people to look at the detailed plans and give us feedback. And even though we are trying to move at pace, that feedback could be quite useful. So, and it is a chance of the community to have its say. So I support that. Councillor Rush, I did have to just take up a little issue with the GWRC thing. You have no idea how much pressure Jenny and I have heard from our counterparts at GWRC who actually want us to do this. They very much want us to do this. In fact, they reminded us that they've asked for it about three or four weeks ago for us to think about this, because they're worried about the capacity on public transport, and they're also worried about the capacity for people to bring in cars. And they know that people are buying e-bikes. E-bike sales have gone through the roof. My sister actually has a, works in an e-bike shop. They have been so busy. So they are very, very keen for us to do this. And this is what we can do to support them with getting people to the, in and out of the city and complement what's available on public transport. So, and the last thing really is about the footpaths. And somebody raised the issue about conflict on the footpaths. And thus, actually, what we're doing here is what we're going to be asking the government to do more of and support us in, as a result of the next paper, which is proposing a different idea about footpaths. And what we will be needing to think about is more of this kind of thing, where we actually provide the separated space for some of the other modes as fast as we can. So I think it's all been said. I'd just like to wrap it up and put it to the vote.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Right. I don't think there's anything really to take separately. Don't see anybody. Councillor Calvert, you want to take something separately?
Yes. So, look, I'd like to, on the table one, the COVID-19 response initiatives, I'm not going to vote for number six and seven. I'll support the others going out, but not six and seven.
Mayor Foster, that's not a recommendation. You can't vote against the table.
Yeah, I think you have a point there. It becomes an issue. Yeah, look, I think the only way to have tackled that is, is that you'd have had to move an amendment to take those out.
All right. Well, then probably it's, I'm probably just going to have to vote against them, all of them.
Yeah, I'm afraid it's far too late to do that now. We had the right reply. So, okay, so we'll take the lot as one. Okay, time to vote. Okay, thirteen votes to two. Now I'm presuming it's councillors Calvert and Rush, is it?
Yes.
Just, okay, thank you. Right. Thank you. That paper passes. Deputy mayor, your, in your hands again for the accessible streets paper.
Yes. So this one, actually, I think is a huge amount of work. And I really do commend Christine, who's been writing a lot of this, and other people, of course, who've been on the team supporting her. There has been an enormous amount to think about here. And our officers are experts on our streets. We have our views and our community have our views, but our officers are actually the experts. This has been a cross collaboration between the design and placemaking team, transport and infrastructure team, and the community networks team. There's been a very, very big piece of work for our organisation, and yet it's just a submission. Generally, it's interesting to note that our officers generally support the thrust of the paper, which is about improving accessibility and safety for all modes in the transport system in a 21st century context. There's been an unprecedented growth of what's happening on our streets and our footpaths, and it's happening whether we like it or not. So whether we like it or not, we have bikes, we have scooters legally, we have bikes, sometimes legally, sometimes illegally. We have skateboards, we have a lot of devices, we have mobility devices. Well, as we have an aging population, we can probably expect more mobility scooters, delivery vehicles, we can expect a lot of things happening on our streets. And I think this paper, the, the government has put out a proposal to manage this in a different way. So rather than legalising different types of devices, they've tried to put guidelines out as to how this will be managed in a different kind of way. So they've decided on behavioural criteria, our speed criteria, and the width of the device criteria as a way of trying to manage all the different things that are happening. So this is kind of response to things that don't make sense at the moment. So, for example, you know, you can have a child's bike with reasonable sized wheels as Jonathan Copard showed us, it's not allowed on the footpath, even though that's a small user and a low-speed device. Whereas you can have an e-scooter that can go thirty-five kilometres with an adult on it, allowed on the footpath. So there's just a lot of inconsistency. Our officers clearly want to support active transport, they want to support safe mobility. And they have, they have really basically decided to support this amendment with some, with some caveats. So our submission that the officers are prepared does highlight the need for monitoring enforcement of the behavioural aspect of things. It does actually suggest a assessment and evaluation at some point to see how it's going. And I think that's really, really important. They also support the need to have ongoing investment in alternative cycleways and, you know, infrastructure that will separate some modes where possible. And they've also strongly supported the fact that speed should be limited to thirty kilometres an hour on a shared path, which is normally a pathway that's wider than a footpath, and often with a separated pedestrian and cycle or other wheeled mobility space. But nevertheless, they, they have rejected, strongly rejected, the paper's original proposal that they should be at fifty kilometres an hour, or at the speed of the adjacent street. They are suggesting a thirty kilometre limit. There is quite a lot to say, but I think if I tried to actually cover the breadth of this paper in the introduction, it would be actually quite a hard ask. We obviously have had a wee bit of input into this. We've stressed the, the transport hierarchy we have, which puts pedestrians right at the top. And I think as elected members, we have stressed our concern about what this might mean for our most vulnerable users of the network, which are pedestrians. And I do think that there are some amendments coming that try to strengthen that as a submission. And the speed, I think, also has been the subject of some discussion. And our officers, with their professional advice, have actually recommended supporting the limit of fifteen kilometres an hour. I think that at one point I saw an amendment that might be coming from councillor Pannett that sort of stressed the need for those other users on the footpath to be very cognizant of the general speed of the traffic in that particular footpath. Because there might be some footpaths where it's clearly a slow speed environment with a lot of very vulnerable people, and the fifteen kilometres may not be appropriate there. But we have to remember this rule would be for everything. So there might be other situations where fifteen kilometres on an empty footpath where someone's trying to get from A to B would be perfectly appropriate. So I'm interested to see what councillor Pannett's amendments are, and I hope that they are still coming. I wanted to speak about that. And I wanted to speak, actually, I can't remember the other, there were, there, I've actually got quite a lot of paper here, and if I said everything, I could be here forever. So I'll leave whatever else I have to say to the writer of reply. And I'll let some other people have a crack at, at saying what they need to say.
Thank you, deputy mayor. I did give you extra time, because as the mover of a paper, you are actually entitled to extra time at my discretion, so I gave you that.
Thank you.
And as councillor Conde, you're going to second this one as well?
Somebody else is welcome too, but if councillor Conde wants to.
If councillor Conde doesn't want to, then I will happily second it and reserve my right.
Councillor Foon's put her hand up.
Okay, councillor, councillor Foon, did you want to second it?
Actually, I think councillor, you or Matthews.
Matthews, okay.
Councillor Matthews, you wish to second? Okay, that's fine. Okay. Councillor Matthews, do you wish to speak?
Yes, I'll speak now. I thank you, Sarah, for all your work on this. And thank you also to Jenny. And we've been sort of involved in this discussion for a wee while. And I also want to pay tribute to Christine and other officers for the hard work that they've put in. There's many complex issues. And I think already in the, in our public submissions, we heard some competing views, there's some heated arguments going on around these issues. They, you know, it is very complex. And our submission, I think, does a pretty good job at trying to, to sort of weave its way around the issues and protecting, you know, primarily protecting the safety of, you know, all, all users of our, our streets. And also to kind of uphold the rights of pedestrians, whether they be on foot, on chairs, in prams, using sticks, using crutches, or any other mobility devices. So I do think, you know, those are the primary users of our footpath, and I want to acknowledge that. I just want to also thank Generation Zero and the Disabled Persons Assembly for their work. And I know that they've got, DPA in particular, and working in partnership with Generation Zero have got some major concerns about the government's accessible streets package. And I, you know, and our submission makes, you know, pains to acknowledge those, that there are very many disabled and elderly people who believe that scooters and bicycles, you know, ridden by adults and e-bikes should never ever be on the footpath. And we do, you know, acknowledge and share many of those. However, we also need to acknowledge that, you know, I live on a street which is never ever going to have cycling infrastructure. And, you know, much of our city will, you know, despite all of our best efforts, and I hope we have a citywide network of safe cycling infrastructure, but it won't be on every single street. So we do need to actually make suggestions that are going to work in the real world. So anyway, I talked to the Disabled Persons Assembly yesterday. The submission also went to our own accessibility advisory group, and I'd like to thank those people for their input and advice. But talking with DPA, we sort of made an amendment, it's not an amendment, but it's in the paper now, that acknowledges that government needs to do some more work, that the, these concerns by disabled people, in particular, and elderly people are extremely- that the these concerns by disabled people, in particular elderly people, are extremely valid and need to be worked through and government needs to be committed to co-designing a final package that takes the need of those pedestrians into account. So, you know, that's a very kind of strong position now in that paper and I want, you know, every disabled Wellingtonian, every elderly person who's concerned about the impact of e-scooters and other devices on their ability to get around safely and confidently, to know that we are listening to you and want to respond to your concerns. I did talk to one person, a disabled friend of mine, who said scootering is a choice.
I'm going to give you another minute if you want.
Yeah, I'll be very quick. That scootering is a choice and that that for many people, you know, being able to get around on our footpaths is not a choice. So so we need to take all of those things into account, but I think we did a good job in the paper and I'd like to thank everybody.
Thank you councillor Matthews. Now, I'm going to leap in next. I just want to check who is, who else wants to go into the, I've got councillor Pannett. Councillor Pannett, you're going to be moving an amendment?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, right. Well, I'm going to leap, I'm going to leap in now and then I'll put you on next. So this is a submission, I just wanted to again to echo the thanks of of everybody for the hard work that the offices have put in. And also, it's been great that you've all contributed to helping and put the submission together. It's a really vexed issue because, I mean, every street is different, every footpath is different, every, the people who use that footpath are different. The density of people in any particular area is different. And I guess that makes us very, very, and obviously also technology is evolving very, very fast as well. I mean, this is something, I'm president of the New Zealand Traffic Institute and we've sort of been wanting some sort of rule around this or set of rules around this for a long time. But it's been, it's been very much in the hard basket, very hard basket because the technology keeps evolving and you're trying to make rules for things which don't exist now or which have just emerged. In terms of the submission, there's a couple of bits I wanted to highlight. The first one is the, one of the things which we actually quite wanted to have happen is the berm rules. That might sound like a sort of a minor part of that, but it is one thing that at the moment we can't prevent parking on booms and unless we sign them all over the place, we'll have to go through a process with all of them. So it's actually quite beneficial to be able to essentially reverse that order so that people can't just go and park all over booms willy-nilly without being specifically allowed to do so. I guess my biggest issue with the submission as it is at the moment is I'm not sure that I agree with the one size fits all approach. And we've said that certain, that a national standard across all footpaths is a good idea, but all footpaths aren't the same. You know, to say 15 kilometres an hour is okay on a busy Lampton key or, you know, a busy central city street, you know, and rely simply on people's individual behaviour seems a little concerning to me, whereas 15 kilometres an hour on a, you know, on a suburban street which there's no other pedestrian on, it's not going to be a problem. So to me, one size fits all is a bit challenging in here. I think the, I don't think we're recognising that, for example, in Wellington, we have places where we've actually deliberately said bikes can go on these footpaths because they are slow, uphill, you know, quite steep places and the bikes will crawl up there. So they're not going a lot faster than the pedestrians and they're not going to cause a risk to pedestrians, but put it on the flat when a bike might be able to go much, much faster. And of course, our ability to enforce this is going to be, well, essentially nil. It's going to have to be self-enforcing, I think is a real problem and is setting us up for a potential problem. So to me, there's things like, is it uphill or is it flat? What is the density of pedestrians? How many people have you got actually walking around in any given area? What are the, what are the nature of the pedestrians? You know, I think councillor Matthews mentioned people who are disabled, people who are older. Is it next to a school? You know, so all of those things become issues. And so one size fits all doesn't, doesn't work for there. What is the width of the shared space? It's one thing to say you're going to be able to ride quite quickly on a, you know, a place which is a couple of metres wide. It's totally different if it's, say, five or 10 metres wide, you've got a bit of space to get around each other. And then just to finish off with the, the issues around speed, I'm not quite sure we've got those and hopefully they're able to pick up Deputy Mayor under your ability to deal with the minor things. But the, the idea of, I'm sure we don't mean that we expect the speed to be the same on a shared path next to a road which is going very much faster. I'm sure we don't intend to do that and that was a, that seemed to be confusion early on. And I have to say, I'm a little concerned about the 30K on, again, it's the same issue of one size fits all, 30K on any shared path. We have shared paths which are really slow spaces. We have shared paths like, you know, ultimately when we get Patoni to Naurona, that probably be a place where, you know, 30 plus will be fine. Because there'll be enough space to do it and people will be commuting long distance and will want to do that. And then I'm not sure whether we've actually in 12G that we have actually intended what we've said there at the moment, which said that we expect all city centres roads to be 30Kph. I know some of you would agree that's a good idea. But it will depend on what we mean by city centre. If we mean that Gevois Key, Cable Street, Wakefield Street are city centre and we're advocating for 30K, then we ought to be doing that. But that's not what we're doing at the moment, of course. That's not what we're proposing. So I think we need to be quite clear what we mean by city centre in that context. I think those are all the things I needed to say. So councillor Pannett.
Thank you Mayor Foster. And I'd like to repeat my thanks to officers who have done a great job on the submission and also to my councillor colleagues, Free and Conde and Matthews for the contribution that you have made. That's much appreciated. Look, obviously this is a difficult issue. It's been plaguing us for some time. And I think it's deeply unfortunate that we are now seeing a bit of competition between pedestrians and cyclists, which is what those of us working in the sustainable transport space have always tried to avoid. You know, we've had some experience already of things like shared paths which have proved to be a little bit tricky. I think the thing here, the absolute crux of the issue is that there is a paradigm shift going on here, which says that footpaths are no longer going to be footpaths. And that is a very big policy call. I understand the justification for it and thank the government for just trying to help keep keep people safe. That's very important, obviously. But, you know, we need a discussion about where else we can get the space to create our little roads which have been advocated by the community for cyclists and scooterists, which will keep them safe. Everyone has the right to be safe on the road. So my amendment is two things. One is that we're going to change the recommendation that we support a 10 kilometre speed limit and also a very moderately worded amendment around just saying that we will agree as council that we will consider making high pedestrian routes device free because we essentially will have that ability. I'm not saying we will do it, I'm just saying that we will consider it. And certainly my understanding is that there is an expectation that Wellington would do that because Wellington is a very walkable city. Remembering, of course, that this is a national submission and they're trying to look at a whole lot of different circumstances. And I of course accept that there'll be times when cycling on a footpath is absolutely fine. But in a lot of places in Wellington, that can be tricky. And we've now, of course, and I was one of these who supported it, have had some experience of having scooters on footpaths, which has been quite tricky. So, look, I think 15K, I agree with Living Streets, that's three times the speed of a walker. It's too fast. I thank the offices for their justification, but I think when you tell someone that they can go 15K, they will go 15K. I don't think a 10 kilometre speed limit will encourage people to go onto the road. I don't agree with that. And I think most people can learn to adjust their speed, even children. And yeah, the other one is just about making sure that we do have some local control here. It's great that the government has recognised that and that we will go through a process essentially to look at what streets should be exempt from cyclists and scooterists. And of course, obviously it's great that we've now got the acceptance that scooterists should be able to go and cycle lanes. That's a huge move forward. And I also just finished by saying that I'm deeply grateful to Deputy Mayor for her great work in building cycleways. And what we now need to do is escalate this very quickly, build back better, let's borrow money and get the cycle network built as soon as possible. And that there will be, with lower speed limits, we will be able to get people cycling safer in suburban areas. Sometimes just a bit of paint may do the trick. Thank you. Councillor Rush will second.
Thank you. Just before we do, could you, is there a particular point at which you are putting the second part of your amendment? Does that relate to a particular point of the submission?
Sorry?
The second part of your amendment?
Yeah.
If I call that up, where did it go? Could you call that up? Thanks Donna. Agree the council, so making high pedestrian routes device free if the government makes the changes outlined in the submission. So which is the bit that you're referring to in the submission?
Yeah, sorry.
And is the submission, what, does the submission say what you want it to say?
Yeah, so I guess, look, I was just, sorry, that's, thank you for picking me up on that. Sorry, that possibly could have been done a bit better. Look, I just, I just would like, sorry, I'll have to find the space. I can work with the deputy mayor just to find the space where it says, Wellington City is going to go through this process because we, because of our walkability, we need to go through it. And strongly support the government's move to allow for local decision-making.
Okay.
I've got a question.
Okay, I've got a question from councillor Day. I guess, so if while councillor Day is asking her question, somebody, if you can locate where it is in the submission that relates to the second part of councillor Pannett's amendment, it'll be helpful.
My questions of officers, just around the 10K.
Yep.
Is that all right if I ask that?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes, yeah, we need to have officer advice when there's something which is different to what we have before.
I just feel that this has got some technical safety sort of aspects and it's not just a one directional proposal when you're talking about speed limit change. And I just, I'd like to understand some of the, some of their thoughts around why they'd recommended 15 kilometres per hour as the recommended speed, just so I understand the difference between those two.
Yeah, I'll invite David Chick to respond to that question.
Thanks Barbara.
Kurokoto, everyone, just tuning in now. Just in terms of the offer advice, in terms of the 15 kilometres per hour as opposed to a 10 kilometre per hour. Again, this is taking the principle of just having a broad overarching framework to work within. We need to keep in mind that behaviour is still a principal driver of the regulatory package change. That 15 kilometres per hour is not a target. And just like for motor vehicles, requiring people to ride, walk, run or scoot for the conditions is also critically important, whether they be crowded streets, narrow or slippery. So doing those activities to the conditions of that particular environment is still the key. Young children are also prone to low speed wobbles, so not high speed wobbles, where the average speed, as indicated in the report, is generally slightly above 10 kilometres per hour. And importantly, as has been highlighted as well, we also need to keep in mind that sometimes paths are not crowded or there are other constraints. So 10 kilometres per hour will be quite slow and has the potential to shift users onto the curridgeway and into a greater potential harm. So that's, that's the offer of advice in terms of the 15 kilometres per hour. Again, it's not a target and you still need to ensure that the behaviours suit the conditions.
You okay there councillor Day? That's enough? Okay. And I've got, sorry, I've got questions from councillor Young and O'Neill.
So my question is just around the definition of device, because I take it that it means e-scooters and bikes, for example, but does it include wheelchairs?
No, I strongly agree with the office's submission that wheelchairs should be allowed on footpaths, so.
So I mean, in principle, I agree with your amendment. I think it's a terrific amendment. But I'm just concerned that that device is subject to misunderstanding. So I think maybe you need to clarify that.
So are people having to be just adding in some extra wording? Is that okay?
Yeah.
We're going to need to sort, we're going to need to sort that out before we get on to second, second to. So. Okay, and David, did you have any advice on that, the issue of a device in relation to the speed limit issue?
Through you Chair, as per the submission, that definition of device, including wheelchairs etc is clearly articulated as councillor Pannett has highlighted.
Okay.
So Mayor Foster, can I just, can we just put in except for, in the second one, except for devices to facilitate access for disabled people or something like that? Is that all right?
That also doesn't cover it either because some, some disabled people use scooters too.
I think, I think you're going to end up.
Okay, that's a debate, that's a debate.
I think you're into, I think if you do that, I wouldn't accept that because you're going to end up with a tricky situation of multiple speed limits, different, different devices on the same space and that's going to be really an even bigger problem. Councillor O'Neill, you had a.
It's not about speed limits. She's just saying about, I haven't got it in front of me now, but it's about that they're not allowed on the road. It's not a difference, it's not a difference of speed limit. Councillor Pannett amendment is just saying that, you know, that certain areas will be free of devices.
Oh, sorry, it's the second part. Sorry, I thought you were talking about the first bit.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, okay, sorry, okay.
That's free is kind of, so it's my, my concern is just that there are some things that might be called devices which actually we would want to have on there, like, you know, or any of us in a wheelchair, for example.
No, no, sorry, got, gotcha. No problem, no issue there. Okay.
Are everyone, is everyone okay if I just put after high pedestrian routes device free, just except for devices which facilitate access for disabled people in brackets? Is that okay?
I'm sure you could make a little punch here, councillor.
I think, I think we will get, we will get some, A, we will get some officer advice and B, we will find out where it relates to the submission.
No, I found it, Mayor Foster, section 17.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I have suggested words which would be micro mobility device.
Through you Mayor, if I could assist, the definition does exclude those for disabled people. So they are not considered devices. So their pure definition is powered and unpowered devices. And the, any device used for those with a disability are not considered devices, but they are considered pedestrians.
Okay.
Okay, so councillor, councillor Pannett, can I ask you, sorry, we're getting a little messy here, but can I ask you in terms of 17, you want to change the word disagree to agree effectively, don't you?
Yeah, I guess so.
Yeah, okay, that's why I was trying to get you to go back to the submission because there's obviously something in the submission you didn't agree with.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry, I was just getting a bit wordy. I was just trying not to get too complicated. That's all.
Right, okay, but that's where we change the submission. Okay, I think councillor O'Neill, you had a submission, a submission, a question to me.
Sorry, no, no question for me. I was attaching some headphones.
Okay, right. Are there any other questions councillor Foon? And this is in relation to the, to the amendment from councillor Pannett.
Can we take them separately?
Well, we haven't, we haven't yet got past introducing them. So yes, we will, I'm sure at the appropriate time.
Thank you.
Right, any other questions of officers? Okay, no. So councillor Pannett has introduced. We are now, oh, so that's.
I do have a question, yes, sorry. Just a question of officers. So the suggestion of 15 rather than 10, does it have any, I mean, any impact on like the ability for safety and also for children learning to ride bicycles? How practical is it that children will be able to learn to ride bicycles? If we put that kind of speed limit on and what are the safety implications?
Yes, so through you the Chair, as, as mentioned, some of those low speed wobbles for those that are learning do become a factor below that sort of 10K per hour. So that's, it's a, it's a matter of physics. As children are scooting along or riding along, keeping the stability, it actually makes sense that you go a little bit faster to get that stability. So as, as we've highlighted in the paper, the average speed, particularly of a, of a young child is about 12 kilometres per hour and because of those facts of physics.
So we might be undermining the ability of children to learn to ride bikes if we reduce it to 10?
I think that's not really, that's for debate.
No, it's a technical question of whether that's, that's an impact. I mean, I don't, I don't know, I'm no experienced speed limits or teaching children to ride bikes, to be honest.
It's purely the matter of physics. As the mayor has highlighted, it's more a question of how also you're going to enforce as well. So the perceptible difference between 12 kilometres, 10 kilometres and 15 kilometres isn't, isn't actually all that much. So there's a number of things that clearly you are trying to consider through this amendment.
Thank you. And David, I can assure you, there's a big difference between 10, 12 and 15 if you're running. Councillor Sparrow. You had a question?
Yes, just in regard to the, the bicycles we're talking about and kids riding bikes. Do any of these bikes have a means of gauging the speed they're travelling at? In other words, a speedometer. I mean, do they know what speed they're travelling at, whether it's going to be 10, 12 or 15? Is there any way of them, the individual who's, who's being told to limit their speed to a certain, whatever it is, of knowing what the speed they're travelling at is?
David, I suspect that's a rhetorical question, but.
And through you Chair, I will take it as a rhetorical question. But there are not too many devices out there, including standard bikes that actually have that without them having, being fitted. have that without them having been fitted. And importantly, in the submission, we're also talking a range of micro mobility devices, both powered and unpowered as well. And I would suggest that the bulk of those don't have speed limits or indicators on them.
So. Okay, thank you. I think we've got enough now. We can go back to the debate and that's a question of what you make of it. It's probably going to be difficult to measure it. Councillor Rush. This is one I'm very tempted to take three people for and three against, then if we've got that many and then move on. Councillor Rush.
So, yeah, I'm thrilled to support my very good friend councillor Pannett in second this motion, but can I reserve my right to speak?
You can. Anybody else wish to speak? Councillor Free. And then councillor Day.
I actually think in this matter, I completely understand what my two colleagues are trying to achieve. But I actually think in this matter, we're number one overriding the experts that governments obviously employ to actually come up with the draft proposal. And then we're overriding our own experts, our own city streets experts. If we try to say that ten is better than fifteen, people have considered this who know a lot more than we do. And I think a very good point was made that it's really about the behaviour. In fact, I wish councillor Pannett had put up a very excellent draft amendment that I don't see now about it actually being about people being respectful of the general speed and conditions. Rather than trying to impose a blanket rule with another speed value that we're not the experts on. So I totally understand where you're coming from councillor Pannett and councillor Rush. But I would really caution us getting involved in this particularly technical matter and dictating another speed. I think there are other ways to achieve the same thing.
Councillor Day.
Yes, I totally support what Deputy Mayor Free says. I think we're trying to find a middle ground where you can't find one. The reality is that this is really being put on us because it would be quite good that we didn't have to have e-scooters on footpaths in many spots in the city. Doesn't mean that they shouldn't be on in other spots, but trying to find a middle ground with speed that probably can't actually realistically be monitored in many situations is very problematic. I do have to say, by trying to say people should go slower, when people get the speed wobbles, I've taught plenty of children how to ride bikes. When they get the speed wobbles, they lose the ability to steer, which becomes incredibly dangerous. And actually, having ridden on e-scooters, the slower you go is actually harder. There is a spot where it's easier and you can manoeuvre manoeuvre more expertly. So I think we've got to be really careful that we don't just pick a number out that makes us feel comfortable because it's something a little bit different to what we've been told. But actually, I do agree with Deputy Mayor Free that we do have expert advice here. And it is around physics. It's not just around our sort of hunch around what feels good. So, and I do have to say that majority of people really do try and do the right thing and drive to the conditions. As I say, I bike in along the hut road and there's an area outside a daycare centre, which we had to work around to make it safer for people going in and out and the bikes coming, riding through. And people really do respect that area. I've biked through many times and watched people going quite fast and just slow down big time because they know that parents and children are walking across that area. So I think we have to try and work to the fact that majority of people do the right thing and the the more easily we can communicate with them what to do, which is to drive to the conditions or ride to the conditions is going to be a lot better for our community.
Okay. I'm going to hop in there just briefly. Councillor Pannett, I think the first part, the speed limit, I agree with Deputy Mayor. And I understand exactly where you're coming from. It's a differential between walking speed and and the speed of a wheeled device. The challenge with ten K, if you could actually measure it, which we won't be able to, and then you wonder about what the tolerances which we would give will be, whether it's ten or fifteen, is that literally you will have people who are quite capable of running faster than people are allowed to go on a wheeled device. So that's going to be a little peculiar. So I, whether you support this one or not, I'm going to go with the experts on this one and stick with the fifteen. But I think the more important, the more important part of your amendment is the second one, which I'm going to strongly support because I think we have to preserve our right to be able to say that in in many streets, we don't think it's appropriate to have wheeled devices on those streets because they are all different. And that's what we need to make sure we protect that right. So I'm going to support your agreeing with that, keeping the one size fits all, as I said, doesn't work and we need to make sure that we can. We're a road controlling authority and the roads include the footpaths and we need to have some control over those, not give it up to a national one size fits all approach. So I'm certainly going to support the second one. Thank you for raising that. Is there anyone else? I don't see anyone, so write a reply councillor Pannett and we will take the two separately.
Shall I speak now?
Oh, sorry, councillor Rush. Yep, where are you going?
Yeah. So thanks very much. Look, for generations, we've been taught not to ride on the footpath, for generations. And yet, here we are encouraging the use and uptake of different devices on our footpaths. Just going to what you mentioned there, your worship. Our footpaths are there for walkers. I mean, all our policies are there to promote walking. And if you've got a device coming at you three times faster than you're walking, it's actually promoting that device's operation. I mean, I, in my community here in Rosneath, gave me a very firm steer that they recognise that devices are here to stay, they are fun, but they are very unsafe at speeds, elevated speeds, particularly around the Oriental Bay, you know, promenade. And so accept them, but would like to see speeds down. In terms of children learning to cycle, why aren't we doing that in the backyard? Why would you go to Oriental Bay and let your daughter or son learn how to ride a bike? There's a skater park right at the end of Oriental Bay that you can do that on. Find a safe place, find a car park. There's one at Niwak where I took my son to, he's five. And I have to say, he goes a lot faster than fifteen kilometres too. So I do think that what we need to be sending a signal to the community is that if you're on, if you're on a device and you're on a footpath, you need to be going slow and prioritising walkers. That needs to be the very clear signal. And I don't think fifteen kilometres does that. I think that does create problems and certainly, you know, the speed does have an effect on the size of your, of the injury. So that's why I'm supporting this motion.
Thank you, councillor Rush. Write a reply councillor Wolf, just in time. But you need to unmute yourself or do something. Can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Now it's better. It's much better.
Okay, I've unplugged. Hey, councillor Rush, thank you for that, that point. I wasn't sure which way I was going to go until you made that point about the footpaths absolutely necessarily being for pedestrians in relation to what we've been taught in the past. I will be supporting you on both councillor Pannett's motion and your seconding. I think that what you said within your debate, that was the clincher for me. And I do think that ten kilometres per hour is more than adequate on a footpath for a device. Thank you.
Councillor Pannett, write a reply.
I'm sorry. Thank you, everyone, for the constructive and mature debate. Councillor working together, always appreciate it. So look, councillor Simon's, my children can't learn to ride their bikes in my little house, so they learnt to at Waingai Park, riding down the hill, very effective. I'm just regret that we don't have more space for them to actually ride. I think councillor Free, sorry, I removed the amendment around behaviour impacting on the culture of the speed because of some advice another colleague gave. She thought it was already in the submission, but I guess, you know, yes, one would hope that people would adjust their behaviour according to what the majority are doing. Look, I guess I'm just a bit disappointed that people haven't seen it. It's been quite problematic to allow wheel transport on our footpaths three times the speed of a walker. You know, look, we have, we have a ten K speed limit on our shared space in Lower Cuba Street, if I'm correct. So why can't we have it on our footpaths, which are very, very sensitive areas? We walkers, and I am a walker primarily, have the right to be safe and not have to be looking around all the time worried that a scooter is going to come up on a nipper or a bike. I don't accept, with due respect, the rationale of the office or the rationale, you know. Actually, people can moderate their behaviour if they're told to. But I don't want to just expect that they will do the right thing. And thank you, Mayor Foster. Yes, I think, look, I appreciate you saying many roads that would definitely go to meet my concerns if we go through a process where we actually exclude some whilst, of course, making sure that we build cycle lanes and cycle pathways. Very, very, very important. And I'm happy to do whatever I can to support the portfolio leaders to achieve that. Thanks again, everyone.
Thanks councillor Pannett. We'll put the two of them separately. So first of all, the first one, which is the speed, the speed limit one.
So that's seven, four and eight.
And, okay. Yeah, if you want to. Yep, okay. Those in favour? If you wrote through one or the other. Yeah.
In favour, Mayor Foster, councillor Calvert, councillor Pannett, councillor Young, councillor Ross, councillor Wolf and councillor O'Neill.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and the second one?
Can I just see that written out again, please? Sorry. Is it there?
So that has an impact. We changed the wording in seven point seventeen within the submission.
Can we also just have, I didn't quite get the voting on the last one. Was it carried or not carried?
It was not carried. Lost seven votes to eight.
Just voting on councillors, Sparrow, Young, Deputy Mayor Free. And that's unanimous.
And that one's unanimous. Okay, thank you. That takes us back to substantive. Is there anybody who wishes, anybody else who wishes to speak on the substantive? If there isn't, we'll go to write a reply. Deputy Mayor.
We might even nearly finish by five o'clock.
Yeah, we might. We're getting close.
The BUM rules that you mentioned, councillor Foster, that have been clarified. I also want to point out that another important clarification. Another important clarification the officers have really wanted for a while is that straight turning traffic will have the right of way, which will actually make our cycleways and our footpaths a lot more safe for those modes. They will now have the right of way when they're going straight ahead and turning traffic will have to go away and watch out for them. The one size fits all. Our officers do support that because it gives clarity across the whole city and the whole nation. But they have also supported the right to make some exceptions for local conditions. And that's where I think councillor Pannett's amendment's a really useful one. Because listening to some of the debate, the debate was clearly around specific streets where people were really concerned about that fifteen kilometres per hour. And the point is, we can now have fifteen kilometres per hour as the default position, but we still can make special conditions. So, you know, the very special streets that councillor Pannett has identified can be accommodated. The portfolio amendments, I just wanted to comment that it's not very clear who the minor edits are going to be, but the officer intention was that it should actually be me.
It should be, should be the transport, walking, cycling, public transport.
So just to note that, I think it's been clear in the course of the debate that that was the expectation of everybody, but just formally note that.
We'll put that in there.
And I think we've had a very good, robust discussion. I really thank everybody for their patience. Thank you, Tam, that you're still here to vote for it. I know you need to go. Let's get on with it.
Okay, thank you all. Right, we'll vote and we'll vote on it as one submission. Nobody wants to take anything separately? No, cool. Right, let's, let's fight. You know, we've got everybody. That's unanimous. Okay, well, thank you, everyone. It's good to finish on a unanimity all the way through, I think. So very good. So, look, thank you, everybody. Thanks, officers, for your work here and thank you for everything that went into putting it together. And then what we will do is we will finish with the closing karakia. Councillor Day.
Karakai. Mayor Karakia Tato. Unuhea, unuhea, unuhea kiti urutapunui. Kea waatia, kea mama, te ngako, te tina na, te wairua, i te aratakatu. Koia ra e rongo, rongo, vakaeria akiki ranga. Kea waatia, kea waatia, ai ra kua waatia.